The light's not on the top. All right, seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Marquez.
Yes.
Trustee Weekly will be joining as a guest. Trustee McAvoy. Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to apologize ahead of time, everybody. I have a really bad migraine right now. So if I start acting like Loopy, if I'm weird, if I miss something, please catch me and bring me back to it. Si necesita traducir en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno el signo de número, parla con contraseña. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance and bring it up to Evelyn. And you can also access the comment cards in the link attached to the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes. And as a reminder, the board cannot have a discussion on public comments. However, we may direct the superintendent to follow up. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject that is listed on the agenda, you'll be called on at the time that that item is being considered by the board. If it's not on the agenda, you'll be called on during oral communication. So with that said, do we have any changes to the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve?
A move to approve the agenda.
A second?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We do have one item for oral communication. For Maria.
My first time. Good evening, school board members and public in general. I would like to take the opportunity to speak about the Classifying School Employees Summer Assistant Program. This is a program that the state had been offering to the union, the CSE members. And I think so is for several years already. The union has been requested that this district, they want to participate. So the district has said no, but this time we would like to request to consider this program because many of our CSE members have been asking us why we don't participate on it. So this is a state-funded summer program and it's good for the employees from 10 and 11 months. So this means they can save money during the school year. And on summer, they get a check in the state, much the amount the employee saved. So the only thing that this district has to do is to have somebody who processes the names and the money that people is putting in safe. So we would like to ask to the school board to consider. And if that happened, the response has to be done by January 1st of 2025. And if you need more information, we can request to our labor rep to give more information to the district and to the school board. So I'm going to give you a copy of the form that we have. And this is going to be for the school year 2526 because now we are ready with the school year already started. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the update on facilities master plan process.
Good evening, board trustees. Tonight, Aaron Jobson from QKA will be giving an update on the facilities master plan process that we kicked off for our district in August. He'll talk about the progress to date, some of the items that they've discovered. He'll talk about the site committee meetings as well as next steps and moving forward through this process. So with that, I'll invite Aaron up and I'll get ready to share the presentation.
Remotes can't hear the audio.
That's not how it's supposed to look. That's it. Okay.
Hold on for just a second.
Perfect. All right. So thank you all for having me here to give you a quick update on the work that we've been doing so far and answer any of your questions you might have on that process. We wanted to start out by just thanking the whole team that's been working on it. It's been a real group effort over the last couple of months especially. So Rick and Martine, Eric, Nick, Ben, and others on Van Pelt's, myself, John, and Hector at QKA, and also Willie and Elizabeth and a few others on our team that have been helping on our side. But also all of the principals, staff, parents, everyone else who's come to committee meetings, who's volunteered their time to help us better understand the facilities needs on the projects. Next. So this is kind of what we wanted to cover is just a quick overview of the process. Just a reminder is everyone what we're doing, both for you all, but also for people who may be watching and weren't weren't here for the last time we gave that update. And then a quick overview of the work that we've completed since our last, the last time I was here. What the highest priority, kind of a summary of the highest priority, things that we've heard. And then we're going to use the three schools as kind of examples to kind of walk through the steps in the process and as an example of what we heard and how we responded to that. And then kind of an upcoming of what's coming next. Next. So just quickly, again, the reason we do facilities master planning is because we know the quality of our school facilities matters to the education that happens within them. And we need input from all of our stakeholders and all of our community partners to best understand what those needs are and maximize the impact of the limited funds that we have to improve our facilities. Next. And our overall project development process, we're starting at master planning, which is the 30,000 foot view. We're looking at, you know, big picture, what are the needs, what are the projects we want to do? How do we prioritize them? And then, once a project is identified, then we'll get into more details about exactly what's needed on that project, what specific spaces, what specific rooms, how should they be related? What can we afford within the budget that's been allotted for that project? And then in design, we'll get all the way down to picking what color the carpet is and how many cabinets are in each room and all those things. And at each step in that process, we engage with the stakeholders and partners on each project that at each school and the staff that are relevant to it, the teachers, the students that are relevant to that project. And we get into more and more level of detail. And this is just to help people understand that we don't have to get into everything at this, at this level. We want to make sure we're keeping things at a pretty high level, but that we'll be back to talk about more things as the projects go forward. Next. So one of the things we also want to keep in mind is equity. We know that we, that all schools have a different set of circumstances, that they come with a different state of affairs with their facilities, but that we really want to try to get all schools to the same level. And that's going to mean different improvements at each school. And a big part of our master planning process is to kind of establish what that benchmark is. And that's what we use our educational specifications for. And, and then where each facility is, and then what we need to do in the master plan, what we need to identify to get them to that level. Next. And that will establish an overall facilities master plan, which are all the projects that we'd really like to do to meet those needs at each campus. But we know that's more work than we're going to be able to fund with any one bond measure or any one source of funding. So after that, we establish that kind of big pool of projects to the master plan, the long-term vision. We'll be working to identify which projects from that are the highest priority, that are going to be the biggest impact to include in the implementation plan for the current bond. And for any future facility funding that might become available that we can, we can apply for. Next. This is our overall schedule. We started over the summer with kind of our first phase of really information gathering. So that's assessments of each, each site. Site committee meeting number one, which is really focused on really a download to us of what those facilities needs are and us explaining what process we're going through. And then kind of over the last couple of months and extending into January is our planning and design phase. So that's taking all that information, putting together our preliminary facilities master plan that kind of has a first pass. And then site committee meeting number two is really reviewing that with all of the, the staff at each site too. And we're just kind of almost finished with those second site committee meetings now. We have, I think, a couple more to do in January. And then, um, once we have all that input, our last phase is really reviewing and finalizing that. So taking that input in, putting together our kind of draft, complete document, getting cost estimating done to identify how much each of those things cost, going through the process of prioritizing those projects and then putting together the final documents for your review for public comment and for final publication and approval, which we anticipate happening in winter, early spring of 2025. Next. These are the overall goals. We want to make sure that we're providing plenty of opportunities for information and engagement from all of the stakeholders in the community, keeping people informed, evaluating capacity, providing information to prioritize projects, really addressing all of these, all these goals. Next. And this quick diagram of our overall process, which is designed to get input and provide information to folks across the community, but engage them at the appropriate level. So our school site committee meetings committees on the left, one at each school site representing staff, students, parents and community members to get their input. We're also working with district-wide groups, like a team working on the educational specifications to set those, those benchmarks and standards, but also meeting with special ed, maintenance, nutritional services, technology, other district-wide departments to make sure we understand their needs as well and gather their insight. They know much more about these facilities than we do, so we want to make sure we capture that information as well. And then we'll be doing a survey and community forums to get input from the broader community and all that comes together. And we review that kind of at the district committee level, which is our team and the Van Pelt team and the, and the district cabinet. And then we'll write a recommendation to the board in the form of the final master plan for your approval. Next. Along with that, we've also been working together as a, as a team, the district, the Van Pelt Construction Services in QKA to implement quick start projects. We know there are some things that are very high priority that we want to get going on right away. And we, we can kind of start ahead because we know they're going to end up at the top of that priority list at the end of the, the master planning. So looking at district-wide lighting assessments have been completed, lighting projects are moving forward. That was a big part of that. HVAC upgrades and cooling are also moving forward. There are four projects that were rapidly moving forward to get ready for construction in 2025 and then planning for future upgrades in following years at other sites. And then also working on temporary cooling measures until those upgrades can be implemented. And then we're continuing to review and identify any opportunities for additional quick start projects with staff. Next. So work that we have completed, oh, this is work that was completed over the summer that we talked about before, which is that assessment, coordination with solar, getting kind of everything scheduled and planned out, and then working on the educational spec specifications. Next. And then this fall, we've done that first site committee meeting at each school site. And again, that was really focused on describing this overall process and schedule. A lot of the slides that I've already gone through are exactly the same slides that we're presenting at each of those meetings. And then talking about what we've seen from our assessment and what they understand from living and working on that campus are the existing conditions and what those educational needs are, understanding all the different programs that happen at each school site, what those needs are, how those, how those interact, what we need to do to make sure that we're accommodating those. And then putting together the draft plan for each school based on that, looking at capacity analysis, there are site assessments, the site committee feedback and the ed spec requirements, and then conducting site committee too. Which I think by the time we put these slides together, we'd completed seven and had three scheduled for later in December. And then the remaining ones will be scheduling in January. And that, we present that draft plan, we have a really good dynamic interaction and discussion around what we need to change about that, what we got right, what, what we're missing, what might be a better option? And then discuss project prioritization based on which projects will have the greatest impact on education. Next. So we want to kind of, just kind of a quick summary of identifying some needs and then the planned improvements that go with those that just as kind of a summary and to let you all know some of the things we've been hearing pretty consistently. So not surprisingly, one of the biggest things has been thermal comfort and ventilation. And, and really understanding that business are too hot is, is mostly the problem. And, and some of the equipment is worn out, but also a lot of classrooms just don't have air conditioning, have never had air conditioning. And so that, obviously, the, the upgrade there that we're planning for is HVAC upgrades. And the ones, little star are ones that are quick start projects that we've already started working on. Another big one is just not having adequate facilities for TK and kindergarten. Obviously TK is a really relatively new development, but a lot of your schools don't have kind of full-size classrooms with connected restrooms even for kindergarten. So that's a big need. So we're looking to plan for new TK classrooms or oftentimes maybe converting three standard classrooms into two TK kinder classrooms with the restrooms and things like that, supporting them too. We also heard a lot that there's not enough appropriate space in most of your, your schools for the student support staff. So for your psychologists and your therapists and your speech therapists and things like that. Oftentimes they're kind of wherever you had space for them at that time, whether it was an extra portable or a classroom or closet, or, you know, more than, more people jammed in one office than should be. So really planning for modernizing those administrative spaces to really meet the needs of our current school and meet them efficiently and well, and then also looking at family centers as well. Next. We've also talked about sustainability and the desire to reduce carbon impact and show environmental stewardship on our projects as well. And that is hugely related to the solar and lighting upgrades you're already doing. And then wherever possible, as we're doing the HVAC upgrades, we're looking to make those all electric as well, which is where we're going in the state overall and, and can have a significant environmental impact, especially when you're already putting solar on those campuses too. We also just see a lot, you know, there's, there are a lot of spaces in, in the district that are just in need of a refresh, right? Like it's just been a while since they've been modernized, whether they're classrooms or restrooms that just are a little bit worn out, need repair and refreshing of the finishes and things like that. So that's where we're showing modernization of most of the existing buildings as well. One of the things we've heard about is there's not really a lot of times appropriate space for indoor PE. The multi-use rooms are often used for multiple lunches throughout the day and used for different things. So creating dedicated PE classrooms at each site that are larger than standard classrooms so they can accommodate PE classes and, and movement. But also just having that space as part of the planning too. Next. A lot of your schools have kind of difficult, not ideal parking and drop-off situations. So where we can, we're looking for opportunities to improve those. We obviously have constraints of where the streets are and how much land we have to work with, but trying to where we can make improvements to that and reconfigure that where it's, where it's feasible. Another thing we heard a lot about is shade on playgrounds and fields, right? As things get hotter, that becomes a bigger and bigger issue. So the solar canopies will help with that in a lot of cases, not all of them. In some cases, we'll be looking at planning for standalone shade structures as well. And then one of the other things we talked about a lot is having appropriate space for science, art, music and other enrichment classes, where having classrooms that are really designed to support that, where they're separated acoustically from the adjacent classrooms where they need to be, where they have the sinks and cabinetry and things to support those. So we're looking at two flex classrooms at each elementary school that are set up to accommodate those different programs throughout the day and throughout the year so that they have, you know, water and power and resilient services and connections to the outdoors and are a little bit bigger than your standard classroom so that they can support those different programs, but do that efficiently and flexibly too. Next. And so one of the things that we, we talk about with master planning a lot and that we've talked about a lot with your teams as well is, is what we kind of call right sizing our school facilities. And our goal there is to make sure that we're, the, the goal in doing this is to make sure that we're concentrating the funding we have where it's going to make the biggest impact. And if we're spreading that more thinly across more space than we really need, then that means that we're, we're not using it as effective and concentrated where it's going to have that biggest impact. And so at each school, we want to be very careful about planning to make sure that we're providing enough space and modernizing enough space to, to meet all of the program needs and the projected and future enrollment and give ourselves some cushion in that too. We want to, we want to try to get rid of in our master planning portable classrooms. So we want to plan to replace those with permanent classrooms where we need to, but not do that more than we have to, because that's money we can spend elsewhere if we're not, if we're not using it for replacing classrooms. And again, making sure that we're supporting all those programs, making sure we're supporting transitional kindergarten with appropriate spaces. And so the steps to that is a demographic analysis and projection, which the district had completed in 2023, that we use as kind of the baseline for that. And then we do a capacity analysis for each campus. So we're looking at every classroom space on that campus and using the district's loading factors to calculate the theoretical kind of maximum enrollment. We're also identifying spaces that want to not be loaded, that could be classrooms but aren't, or need to be used for something else, whether that's a PE classroom on an elementary school, where you can't count that because when those kids are in there, the second grade classroom is empty, right? So it's kind of a one or the other. So we're accounting for all of that and looking at that, as we do that capacity analysis on each site. And then we incorporate that into our facilities planning. And we have been reviewing that with this, with the teams at the second site committee meeting as well. Next. So just a little bit about the demographic projections and, and I'm not the demographer, so this is my architect summary of it. But in, and we've been doing master planning, you know, kind of, we, we're always doing master planning, but especially over the last few years, declining enrollment, as you all know, has become a issue for most districts across the state. And really what's driving that is just birth rates are a lot lower than they used to be. In that, what we've been told is that since a high in about 2006, which is your kind of high school seniors, those rates have dropped almost 25% to where they kind of hit a low in 2022. And that means that for every household, there's 25% fewer children. You may have a few more households and we have another grade in TK than we had five years ago. So that all is factored into those demographic projections. And they do that based on, you know, very detailed analysis of all kinds of things, including planned and in-process housing development, including what type of housing that is, how many students it's likely to generate and, and historical patterns and, and all of those kinds of things. And then they produce that projection, which gives us a projected enrollment, I think it's out to 2032 in this case, and at each site individually, based on the conditions in that specific geographic area and for that school. And so the, that's the information we use to inform, to make sure that we're planning enough classrooms for each school to accommodate that and again, and give us a reasonable cushion beyond that too, because we want some flexibility. We want to have a little capacity in case we get more students than projected and we can make sure to accommodate them. Next. So we're going to talk through briefly three schools and just kind of as an example of what the process we've gone through is and how that applies to specific schools. So the first is Henry Ford. And I'm going to kind of talk through these at a high level. I have not been to all of the meetings, we have a whole team that's been doing this, but John and Hector are on the call and they've been at all the meetings. So if you have more detailed questions than I can answer, we can bring them and to, to help with that too. But Henry Ford is one of your existing elementary schools. It currently has 29 classrooms, which gives us a theoretical capacity of 639 students. In general, you have buildings there that, you know, are need of modernization. I think one of the things we really heard is there's some real challenges with the school office in that it being undersized for what's needed, but also in where it's located, it doesn't really supervise the entry. It's not clear where it is when you drive up to the school site. So that, that was a challenge that we wanted to make sure that we addressed. Just generally, the classrooms are in need of modernization. There's a lot of things that are, that need to be fixed, that need to be updated. There is some challenges with the pickup and drop-off at the front of the campus. This is a difficult one to be able to do a lot about because you just don't have that much street width to be able to, or street frontage to be able to, to use. And the, you know, the modern is general kind of comments that we talked about already, the HVAC lighting, things like that are definitely brought up as well, as well as not really having any shade on the playground and that being a long-term issue too. So next. So this is kind of our notes for meeting one. We use Miro, which is kind of a online giant infinite whiteboard, if you will, for these meetings so that as we're in the meetings, we're adding these post-its, we're making notes, we're doing all that together so that that kind of makes its own record of the meeting and it's very interactive. And it also works well, and we've been doing some in-person, some Zoom and some hybrid meetings, and it makes that pretty seamless between those different platforms as well. So this is an example of what the Henry Ford meeting went through. So we kind of, the yellow post-its are a lot of what we talked about in the meeting and then kind of taking that and organizing it a little bit and fleshing it out on the right. But that kind of documented a lot of the things that, that we just mentioned. Next. And then for meeting two, we came back with an updated plan, showing repurposing some of the existing buildings, reconfiguring some things, which I'll get into in a minute. And that gets us to a capacity of two, of 24 classrooms, 477 students. And you can see from the enrollment projection there at the bottom that the enrollment is projected to be close, you know, 357 in 2034. So still giving us a lot of capacity and room there, but using the facilities in a little bit different way to meet those needs. And then the grid on the right there is actually a tool that we use to help get information from the committee on what projects are most important. So we kind of make a little post-it for each of the projects and we sort them into the horizontal axis of low, medium and high cost. And then as a group in the committee, we talk about which one should we put as the highest impact and which ones are not meeting, which ones are lower. And we don't let them put all of the things at the higher impact because that doesn't really help us, right? We need some differentiation between the two. So you can see here that a new TK building, modernized classrooms and reconfigured classrooms were at the top of the list, air conditioning at the top of the list. And then some of the other things like the library, multi-use room, the parking and drop-off would be great, but wouldn't have as big of an impact on education. And so that's super helpful information for us as we go. One of the next steps that we'll talk about is, is going through getting kind of scoring projects for, for their impact to help prioritize them, that this will be really important information for us in that process. Next. So this is the draft plan for that, that school site. So really what we're looking at here is you kind of have the horizontal wings across the school. Thanks, Rick. And at the front of the school. What Rick pan, there you go. At the front of the school is a building kind of perpendicular to that, that was kind of screening that office. So we're showing demolishing that, creating more of a drop-off kind of plaza there at the front of the school. And then reconfiguring the end where you kind of see it says reconfigured office there in the orange space at the end of the, that middle building there and that becoming the new office. And there being a staff room associated with that. And then in the next week, there's a family resource center. So we have those two public functions right at the front of the campus that can be easily accessed, but that also puts the office in a position where it can control access to the rest of the campus better and supervise the front of the school. And then the, the dark blue is kind of a, is modernization of those spaces. So we're showing all the, the classrooms being renovated. The wing kind of at the top of the, the campus there, we're showing reconfiguring that into your two flux classrooms and your PE classroom. And then at the bottom left, the, the sort of maroon color is new construction. So we're showing removing some portables and some classroom buildings down at that corner and creating new buildings for TK, Kinder and CDC around a playground dedicated for those kids. There's one other thing I forgot to mention earlier is that the current TK playground is kind of right out towards the street. And that's problematic too. And we wanted to kind of screen that a little bit and protect that a little bit more. So configuring the building at the street and kind of creating a courtyard for the play area was one thing we wanted to achieve too. So this is the plan that we reviewed with them and got some feedback on and refined a little bit. I think one thing that the team told me that we want to add to this is, is part of that process, the solar canopy got moved. It's the little kind of gridded thing all the way up at the top. And so then, since that's not going to really provide any shade on the playground, we probably need to add some standalone shade structures on the playground to this plan to, to provide some shaded area. Next. So the second school we want to talk about is McKinley. So McKinley has 33 classrooms, a capacity of 615 currently. It, you know, this is one of the more, the older, more historic schools, buildings in the district. So it is also in need of a lot of modernization. It has a challenge with the inadequate office space. I think one of the things that is interesting about this campus is it's a shared campus with North Star as well. And there are a lot of opportunities to that, there are some challenges to that, and that presents some unique needs. And that's one of the things that we talked about a lot. The schools have a really good relationship and cooperative relationship with each other, but there's always going to be some challenges with that. And that, that's evolved over time and the facilities haven't necessarily kept up with that. So one of the things we want to look at is creating a clear sense of entry for both schools on this campus and having that kind of be two equal entries into the campus. So that's something that we wanted to look at. Also, the buildings kind of at the top of the, of the drawing here are difficult from a supervision and access standpoint with the, the rest of the campus. And then you kind of have to go outside to get to them and it's really hard to kind of keep that safe and secure. And then some of the facilities for, for music and for music and PE and things like that are especially kind of in need of replacement or updating. So if you go to the next. So we read a lot about that and a lot about all those different issues in the meeting. Got a lot of input on kind of specific needs for whether that be for kind of just all of the things that go around sharing the school site, for the main office being really hard to find and not controlling access. And they'd like it located closer to the front of the building. And understanding like how the auditorium is used, that it's not, it's really a district wide facility. It's used by each school, kind of its own scheduled time, and it's not really owned by this site per se. And kind of some of the challenges and opportunities that go with that as well. And then understanding that needing dedicated spaces for music and art programs especially. Next. So again, we came back with an updated plan. We talked about that. We planned that for to be around twenty classrooms for a little over five hundred student capacity, which again is is gives you quite a bit of space above the three hundred and eighty nine projected enrollment for that school. The same kind of exercise with looking at improvements. In this case, we're looking at a a new building, which we'll talk about in a minute, being really high, modernizing the existing classrooms being maybe the highest. Next. So what we looked at here is actually taking the front historic building and setting it up where the the orange bit that you see there is the office for McKinley. And then on the other side would be the office and main entry for North Star. And they would both face be part of the historic building, be face the front of the school, we configure the drop off in the parking and create kind of a new entry promenade into the campus that would serve both of those schools. And be the front door to both those schools, make it easy to find both, have a good relationship between both. And then the sort of south half of that building on the first floor would become kind of the North Star office and kind of main entry to that. And then random modernizing that whole building, the second floor and the the upper half of that would be for McKinley. And and be the office and some of the support areas for that. And then replacing the the buildings that are up on the corner, which I think is the existing library and family resource center with a new two story building that would be admin, library and science labs. And then a new building close between the existing building and the NPR and the cafeteria would be a new PE and music building that'd be a single story building. And then a number of outdoor courtyard improvements, which are kind of the green squares. You can see the solar panels there in the gridded hatch and a number of other improvements to the site as well. Next. So the last of the three schools we're going to talk about is Taft. So Taft is another good candidate, again, school that has, this was one of the schools that had one of the big projects in the last bond. They had the new multipurpose room, some of the STEM classrooms, library, nice courtyard out at the front of the school. But the rest of the school is in need of being modernized to really bring up to that level. And and address some of the the same issues we've been talking about HVAC roofing, things being worn out, not having shade on the playgrounds, pick up and drop off being a challenge as well, and not having TK and Kinder classrooms that meet recommendations. Next. So again, here's conversation here with the team as well as, you know, getting feedback from them, understanding those needs, talking about how how they use, how they might want to use the courtyards between the classroom wings as well. Next. And then we came back with a proposal. And here we're actually looking at, you know, this classroom, this campus has quite a few more classrooms than they they need for their projection enrollment. So we're looking at what if we actually looked at at demolishing one of the wings and creating some more outdoor space? And that would still give us, you know, capacity of five hundred and fifty in the, which is far above the projected moment. But one of the things we learned in talking through this is there's also a lot of partner programs on this campus that use some of those classroom spaces but are not school programs. And so aren't counted in the, you know, not accommodated in the enrollment capacity. So that was something that we didn't know. And so we talked about that and what those classrooms were, you know, how much space those programs needed and what that would look like and what that impact is is on the district. And and talked about that. We talked about how we might accommodate that, what we might think about a little bit more with that. And and then we we did our prioritization exercise. And then next. And so we made some some changes to this plan based on that, which is to keep all four of those classroom wings and renovate them. To move the CDC program into part of one of them, renovate some of those classrooms to better accommodate that program. So we can get rid of some of the older portables that those are in. But then also look, you know, we still have a little more work to understand kind of what the spaces we want to kind of set aside for those partner programs. But look at using the existing classroom buildings to do that rather than than tearing them down and then renovating the courtyards between those buildings to be the outdoor learning environments and provide a little bit more access to nature and outdoor space adjacent to the classrooms. Next. So that's kind of a good summary of where we are so far. And then now we can talk a little bit about where we'll go from here. So one of the things we want to do is have some community forum meetings. And really the goals for that are really provide information and gather feedback from anyone in the community who's interested in the in this did the district and the facilities and the facilities master planning. We'll do a similar overview of the overall process and timeline, try to keep that pretty short. And then present a draft for each school. So kind of really just starting with that main plan and and talk about what the needs were, talk about what we are planning to do to address those. And collects, you will use in the past, we've used different like kind of online polling tools and stuff to do live to collect information on which of these improvements do you do you think are most impactful? What other questions do you have? Things like that so that we can get some feedback from the community as a whole as to which projects are most important and answer their questions and take their suggestions about the individual schools. So we were working on kind of organizing those and getting those set up to be scheduled once all the site committee meetings have been completed. And so we anticipate that to be kind of in late January. And so we're working together as a team to figure out like how that should be structured and when those should happen to to maximize engagement. Next. So here's an example of another district where we did that feedback process. So we will have given the presentation kind of like I just did for the other schools and then ask, you know, we hear the top six, eight improvements that we proposed, which ones are you think are most impactful? And we do this in a way where everyone gets a hundred points. And they get to allocate those a hundred points to however they want across these projects. So if they really think the student union building is the thing, they can put all a hundred points on that. Or they can spread them around to the different projects. And that is a good way, we feel like to mimic the the decisions that you all have to make. In that you don't have unlimited money, you have a limited amount of money and you have to decide where it's going to be most impactful. And that's our job is to make those recommendations to you. So it kind of gives a little bit of a feel to that. We can't just say everything is super important. We have to kind of figure out. Let's make difficult choices. So we found that to be impactful. We can do that bilingualy, as you can see there too, so that everyone could participate in that together. And so that's been a good, a good feedback method that we're planning to use here as well. Next. So upcoming, again, finishing those site committee meetings, we have a draft of the educational specifications that the district team is reviewing and will be finalizing and incorporating into the final document as well. We'll be working on those community forums and then we'll be working on kind of a survey version of that too, which we'll probably use to collect kind of overall across the district, which kinds of of improvements do we think are most are the highest priority. And so once we do those things, the other thing we'll be doing, which we'll come back and talk about more, but is the in what we call indicators of quality. And so for each project, we'll develop usually six kind of metrics where we'll we'll score each project on those metrics and then they'll be weighted a little bit differently too. So that there's a numerical score that represents kind of the the impact that project would have on education. And that just allows us to compare across school sites and to try to kind of normalize those and make sure that we're, you know, it's it's one factor in making decisions to make sure we're using the funds equitably, that we're looking at where that's going to have the biggest impact, which schools have the highest level of need, what those priorities are. There are other factors that'll go into that too. There are logistical factors and access to funding and and things like that, but that's an important part of that process. And and we'll come back and talk to you a little bit more about what those different metrics are that we're recommending and and get your input on how they might be weighted as well. And so once we, that'll be done at the same time that we're getting the cost estimating done. So once we've kind of identified all the projects, we'll score them, the cost estimate will estimate them, and then we'll put all that together into a final document to present to you, which will give you the whole document to review. And then we'll do kind of a summary presentation like this too, to cover the highlights. And then give you a chance to review and comment on that, incorporate those into a final draft to present for approval. Next. So that was a lot. I would imagine you all have a few questions.
Thank you for all that information. Open up to the board. Questions or comments?
Sure. Again, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, yes, that was a lot of information and I appreciate everyone that's involved and making this decisions. When you talk about the CDC portables, are those portables that are district owned or are they leased?
I don't know specifically for every site if they're owned or leased. I don't know, Rick, if you know that.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Really, I mean, it was, you know, self-explanatory and like I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. This is bringing it all back to me the first time we did this. And it's a lot. And I just think the two new board members in particular will need to get out to all the school sites and really take some tours and fully appreciate it. It's a big decision for the new board, working with the superintendent and others to make. And it's pretty clear just from the first, I'm sorry, I have a little echo. From this, the first three sites that you've shared with us, we're not going to have enough money to do all of those things that, you know, every school site, you could have a whole new plan, which is sort of what these are. And so and and you mentioned this, I mean, clearly we're not going to have enough money to do all of it. And so one of the things that we did, and it sounds like, I mean, I like the ideas that you have on prioritization and getting input from each school site, what's the highest priority? If we can't do it all. And I know what we decided last time is are you guys getting echo or just me? Okay, sorry, maybe. Maybe I've got my ears are a little plugged tonight, so that could be part of it. Shoot, what was I going to say about the prioritization? That it'll be important to to get all of that. And oh, I know what I was going to say is last time, you know, what we did is we made sure like we did all the safety improvements we need to do at all the school sites, whether that was earthquake proofing or safety to students with fencing, that sort of thing, you know, so.
Yeah.
See, and and we're sort of doing that right now with the HVAC, right? Because that's clearly something that we didn't deal with in the last bond adequately. And that's risen to a super high priority for the community. So I know we'll be doing that and then you'll start doing the other. So I just think it's going to be really important to make sure that we get input, really good input from the the people who are at the school site, like how's the flow of students, what's really not working? Because I know when I'm going out to school sites, which I try to do, you hear about those things. And sometimes if you're the architect or whoever, you know, any one of us just going on the site for the day or a few hours, we don't see those things. So yes, really, really important that if the site council or whoever you're working with doesn't have those people, that we get those people there, right? And I know one of the things we did last time is we did have you know, all the plans laid out. And I was trying to remember if we did it. I think we did it school site by school site, but then we school site by school site. And then we also had an opportunity, a couple of forums where they were all there so people could come and really try to get a handle. Because it's just gonna, I mean, this is, you know, going to be a really big decision and we want to do it right, whatever we do. So anyway, that's kind of the higher level stuff. A couple of you know, kind of smaller questions I had was, I don't know if I saw in the three potential drawings, a staff room? Did I just miss that?
I don't know if it was in all of them. Sometimes it gets lumped into the sort of admin space, but it's definitely part of what we're considering.
Okay, so it's kind of the staff room. Right, you've mentioned the priorities around kind of extra rooms, you know, staff room.
Staff room is one, yeah, we want.
One place where they can.
Right. And we don't want to count that as a classroom.
Exactly. So I just want to make sure that's that's clear. And then any of those extra rooms for the mental health or the special ed services we're providing. And I wasn't, that's not included in classrooms then.
No, that's part of what we're really, instead of having them be in a classroom, is to kind of pull them together into spaces that are designed, you know, that are appropriate for what they need.
Okay.
Which oftentimes isn't a full classroom worth of space either.
Right.
So we can be more efficient with that, right? We might take staff that's in four classrooms and put them in two thousand square feet of space that's designed as offices and conference rooms and and, you know, larger spaces where they can work with small groups of students.
Okay, and that's accounted for in these. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. It's a little bit small print and I was, I did read it before the meeting and then during it, but it wasn't entirely clear. And then the Taft CDC, so the preschool, is that still accounted for at that school site or?
It should be, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Let me see if I can. It's kind of at the top of portable. Yeah, it's part of that top. Yeah, it's actually kind of the end of the top classroom wing we proposed kind of moving it into there.
Oh, that orange. Okay.
That orange piece, the line kind of overlaps with the text there. So it's a little hard to read, but yeah, that's a CDC.
I mean, my only comment there is, you know, I think one thing to consider is the seat, you've now kind of put the CDC over into the main classroom area and you put the TK and the K away from the main classroom area. So I don't know if it was me, I mean, I think I would get input from the school site and make sure that they're comfortable with that. Because I know in the past, if if the preschools typically are sort of on, you know, one part of the campus and then you've got your TK and K, they're a little more connected with the campus, recognizing they need smaller playgrounds and facilities. And I was just out at Taft today, and so that was one thing that popped up because you're sort of putting the TKK, I think where the current CDC is.
I think the current CDC is actually kind of between that TK and K building and that is kind of where that node is in the top left corner. There's actually kind of two portables that are that are there. That's actually where the CDC is now.
Okay.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken. So we're taking it from there and bringing it in. But your point is well taken that.
Yeah.
And we did, we did talk about this with the staff, but like I mentioned, I think there's a little maybe extra review that we need to do here because we've made a few revisions since that that meeting and and that can be part of it, talking about that and making sure that we're balancing, you know, we want to have the TK and Kinder have a connection to the drop off. You know, have restrooms and things in their facilities, have their own play yard, but the CDC also does and has its own unique access requirements too.
Yeah. Right. And then it's always just so interesting because when you have the little tykes, like, you know, for them walking over to the cafeteria. You know, anyway, but those are all things a school site can can figure out. So and then in terms of the classrooms, it looks like you were doing kind of twenty to one or twenty two to one as an estimate. I was trying to figure.
Yeah, we have.
Capacity that you're talking about.
Yeah, we we worked together with the district leadership to talk about loading sort of average student per classroom numbers for different grade levels, because it varies from, you know, TK is one and kindergarten and then the lower grades and the upper grades and middle schools all have like slightly different factors based on state requirements, based on your union contracts, based on a number of things. So we dial that all in with the with the leadership team and made sure to factor that into the calculations.
Okay, great. Oh, God, I have one more question. You know, it'll come to me. Mike, why don't you go? I know I had one more comment I wanted to provide, but.
Yeah, okay. And I kind of wanted to build on on your question. First of all, thanks for everyone that's involved in, you know, in this whole undertaking. It's it's clear that even even to this point, just a tremendous amount of work has really gone into it. Kind of assessing our facilities, engaging stakeholders. You know, and I think that this facilities master plan is really going to be kind of the cornerstone of how we provide the safe, modern and, you know, quality facilities that'll be kind of like the foundation for student education. I do think that the that the input, the site input and and, you know, the community input is really an important part of it. So I was wondering, like, have there been challenges getting stakeholders involved and what kind of things are being done to be able to address that?
Yeah, it has been a little bit of a challenge early in the process. And that's part of why we slowed the process down a little bit. So you may remember when we first talked, we were trying to get, we're trying to be done by now. We're very close to now. And and what we found is that it's just, it's been harder to get the right stakeholders there at those meetings. Just everyone's busy, right? It's a busy time of year. These are, you know, we're asking people to volunteer their time and that's not, that's not easy. There's a lot of events at every school, especially it feels like in the fall. So it's just been a little bit of a challenge to always get the right people there. So we slowed the process down a little bit to to allow some more time to to gather those committees together for the the site administrators to be able to do that. We also did some meetings hybrid. We did some meetings on Zoom where the site, you know, where the principals thought that would be a better way to get more people involved. So that's kind of been the approach to to do that. And and we've had different levels of engagement at each site, like and, and we've had different levels of engagement at each site, like you expect, you know, just every, everyone's personal circumstances intervene. But I think we've gotten a good level of input across the board and, um, tried to be flexible to accommodate to that. So that was really kind of those things that been able to do, um, to try to make sure that we can still get as much input as we need to, you know, in all the ways that you articulated, to make sure that we're not going to see everything by just taking a tour of a site for one afternoon. We need to really lean on the expertise of the people who are there every day and have been for years.
I just have for that too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, and I'll say, uh, what I said is absolutely, uh, correct. Uh, at the start, it was a little bit more difficult, and after we got through the first slightly committee meeting, we saw more participation in the second, right? So, uh, the school sites that might've had one, two, or three people, uh, at, at the first meeting, now have six or seven. Oftentimes, there are still some challenges with a couple of sites, but we saw much more participation after that first meeting, and the principal and other staff members that were there were able to, uh, give feedback to, uh, the school community. So that was also a positive.
And then Elisa and John, I don't know if you have like best practices that worked well or didn't work well from when you were doing Measure T for making sure people got input, whether it's like just putting the plans up for people to look at at the site without it being a meeting, or I, I don't know, but if you have any suggestions that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say that the, um, the meetings that we had at the school site were pretty well attended. I mean, there would be 50, 70 people at most of them, um, you know, parents, staff, and that was just the bigger meeting, um, after there was already a lot of input from others. So I do think meetings at the school sites, probably in the evening, to accommodate working parents.
But maybe when there's more like, hey, we're presenting kind of the plans, come look at that state, because as, as Rick was saying, more people get more involved, as it's like, hey, let's review what we're looking at.
Right, yeah, you know, um, one thing, if you mind, I remember what, and it sort of has something to do with this. So one of the things, um, you know, the last time, we wound up deciding, okay, instead of just trying to do little bits at every school site, which we did do little bits at every school site, every site, site got modernization and, you know, digital stuff and things like that, but we did decide to do the three bigger sites, so Taft, Garfield, and Orion. Um, I mean, clearly those sites, I mean, just looking at Taft tonight, you still have other ideas, but I do think I would recommend that we go back and look at the prioritization we did, because there were some other bigger ones that are really older built. So, so those, those, those were the school sites that had kind of the old, like 80-year-old buildings, classrooms that we really needed to take care of, but then we had a lot at 55, 60, so I think we need to go back and look at that. And just my one concern is, if you do these big blown-out plans at every school site, you may get people really excited about those things, and we're not going to be able to do them all. Now, I don't, there's no easy way, because I think you do want to do that for your facility, facilities master plan, because it gives you sort of the North Star as you move forward, here's what you do or not do. But I would, I would think we, we could go back and at least look at, I mean, I don't want to say the schools' names, but I have them on the top of my head right now, the ones that we didn't necessarily promise, but we did say, hey, they didn't, remember, I don't know if you remember, they didn't quite make the cutoff list, and I think it's important to go back and, and look at that. Of course, by now, it's all new students and parents, although a lot of the staff are still around, and I know I've heard from some of them, remember, Elisa, you didn't get to my, you know, my old 60-year-old classroom. So anyway, before we start, um, renovating, you know, some of the newer spaces, I really think we need to look at those older classrooms.
And that's definitely the, you know, I, I think going back and looking at those, that information before is definitely a good idea, but it's the same type of conclusions that we'll come to as well, like thinking about, you know, like, like the, the diagram with the apples, right? Like, some of those schools have, you know, are closer to that line already.
Yeah.
And it's going to be important to bring the other ones up, and that, that's going to be a higher priority too, and we can reflect that in the, in the, in the process.
Yeah, and I think it'll be really important for the principals at the school site to be really talking to their community and making sure that they understand the importance of giving fe- feedback early, because I do remember, actually, now I'm just remembering one site that literally got to a few of us. I mean, like, the day before, we were going to approve the facilities master plan with concerns, and so that is not the time to do it. So the time to do it is now, so I think we need to impart, and maybe, you know, January, when everyone gets back from.
Yeah, maybe not right now.
Yeah, no, not right now. I think people are thinking about holidays, but you know what I mean? Like, really, I think the principals, you're the first line of communication, and say, hey, you got, you know, we need you. This is now the time. Yeah. Okay, sorry, picking up a lot of time.
That was, that was, like, it's good. I can impart the, part of the practice from the last time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and make sure that we get some of that transition handed off. Uh, that, that was, that was basically. I, I, I do appreciate the emphasis on equity, um, that, that you're talking about with the planning here and environmental sustainability and weaving that right into the process and making that core there. Um, I'm really looking forward to the rest of the community forums and the surveys and, and seeing what's in there. You know, I think it's great that we're getting as many voices as we can into it.
Um, trustee weekly, I cannot see you, so if you have questions.
I'm good. Thank you for remembering me, but.
Okay, yeah, just use the raise hand feature if you do, and, and that way I can call on you. Um, thank you very much for the presentation. I don't know if there's, I think that was it. Um, and I know you've got some, uh, your team on Zoom also, so, yeah. I'll sit with that. Sorry, guys, my head is. Half right now.
Well, anyway, very exciting. Um, I'll be watching closely and probably providing some feedback.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, it, it's been great to work with your whole team, and we're looking forward to finishing this process up next year, and we'll be back a couple more times to, to talk about the, you know, the next few steps in that process. So, thank you.
Great, that brings us to, um, Roosevelt School presentation. A little bit later than we planned. Sorry, guys. Thanks for hanging in.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
So tonight, we have Tina, who will be, Ms. Mercer will be presenting the board, her board presentation.
Uh, good evening. President Lawson, Vice President Wells, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Baker, cabinet members, staff, families, colleagues. Um, I want to make a special shout out to the Roosevelt staff and families who are actually on tonight, because I know it makes for a very late night. And also, um, just introduce a little bit of my team who's here today. So we have, um, our Vice President, Vice, if you don't mind waving, but Vice Principal, Veronica Chavez, we have our Community School Coordinator, that Orinanda, uh, Lobos, and we have. They all nervous, sorry. And, and MTS, MTSS Tosa, Wendy Brown as well. So thank you for joining me here this evening. Um, so as principal of Roosevelt Elementary School, I'm excited to share our plan of action this evening as we look at our data and really look at how we're building sustainable instructional practices. So go ahead. So the dashboard is released in November of each, uh, each November for the previous year, um, and our 22, 2022, 2023 data placed us in the comprehensive support and improvement status for this current school year. Roosevelt was in the red band for a number of key indicators, um, most, which is the most concerning band, um, specifically for our scores in math and language arts and across all the different subgroups, and our suspension rate for two different subgroups. Um, this November, when the dashboard was released, um, there was a lot of positive momentum. Um, but English language arts still remains an area of concern overall. Um, and math remains a concern for certain subgroups, our Hispanic population, our socioeconomically disadvantaged, and our students with disability subgroups. And then chronic absenteeism is something that we'll look at for our English learners as well, multilingual learners. However, in saying that, we did make a lot of gains in the past year. Um, and I think that's just really important to call out the fact that math overall, we're now in the yellow band. So for, I know people here understand that we go from red, orange, yellow. So we've actually moved up a couple of bands overall there. Um, our English learner, learner progress has been really strong. Our chronic absenteeism overall has been really good, and our suspension rate is in the yellow, and that's also been really positive as well. So I think it's also important to say, we don't know yet what our status is going to be for the upcoming school year, but obviously, we're hoping, we've, based on previous, um, things, we think we're probably going to be moving out of the CSI status. Do you want me to read the LCAP goal? Uh, you all should know the LCAP goal. We live and breathe it. So, um, I'll just address, um, the specific Roosevelt data for this. So overall, um, as you can see in this, the overall, um, overall, we're actually at the lowest rate of chronic absenteeism since the pandemic, which is actually really exciting. Um, decreases in, across almost all subgroups, and that's on the next slide. I want to just move to the next slide. Um, across all, almost all subgroups. Um, and so we'll address the strategies on an upcoming slide. Um, but there's really, it's really important to highlight the fact there's lots of really positive, um, follow-up and the real personal touch. And I will say our MTSS Tosa does a lot of that with that real personal touch, which makes a really big difference. As we look at our suspension rate, um, the decline has been due to a, a number of reasons. I will share the bulk of suspensions in the last two years have been in our middle school. We no longer have a middle school, and it has been declining for the last three years. So last year, we still did have eighth grade. Um, this year, we're a straight TK five, which definitely does mean there's fewer big behaviors which result in suspensions. Um, but in saying that, we've also done a lot of work in the preventative side in terms of really, a big one being the really positive relationships between students and staff, and providing a number of really safe spaces for students to share their concerns and so forth, um, on campus as well. Um, and so we've decreased across all subgroups too, which is good. Next slide. Okay, so I do want to share out one of the really big benefits of being community school is we really do focus on the entire child. And so when we're looking at things like attendance, social, emotional, learning, behavior, a lot of those really look at the whole, at the whole child, and I think that's just really important. It's a really strong partnership we have. Um, we have a weekly screen team that involves a number of people on our site, so the members who are here today, as well as our school psychologist, um, mental health counselor, and we really talk about the students around whom we have concerns, and that can be any variety of concerns that we may have, whether it be academic, behavioral, social, emotional, um, mental health, any of those pieces, or attendance. Um, so I'm going to then address specifically with attendance. Um, as I said, the personal touch has been really, really important, and a big part of that is we've had two really successful drop-in days where everybody who, with whom we have attendance concerns, and that can include not just those students who are absent a lot, but also those students who are chronically tardy. Um, we invite them to come and collaborate with our family center, collaborate with our mental health, to really create a strategy for them and to assist them actually in coming to school. Um, and we've had over 50 families join us on those two drop-in days so far this year, um, which is really exciting. Um, we've done a lot of celebration, um, so personalized postcards and so forth are being sent home to families with whom we've seen a big improvement. So really encouraging them and continuing that encouragement and celebrating all of that. There's also a lot of different celebrations even at school with the students. Um, there's attendance bucks they can earn for being on time. There's different raffles. We have awards for perfect attendance each month, and they actually get a Panda Express coupon that goes along with that, which is fun. I think another big impact is actually now we have, our Extended Learning Opportunities Program is actually serving almost 60% of our students. In the past, it was much, much smaller, and I think, uh, having that after-school programming for our students has really made a big difference in terms of parents being able to get them to come to school and stay at school all day. We also provide bus passes for those students who live, um, further, further on the outskirts of our, um, territory, but it's available also for any of our students who actually do need them as well. We're also utilizing the new school messenger in Power School to send daily messages, whether they be wake-ups or reminders. It's part of the collaboration with the parents. Um, Wendy actually worked with a number of students to personalize alarm clocks, where they actually got to decorate them, and so the kids really take ownership of their alarm clocks, um, to help them wake up. We've created personalized, individualized morning and nighttime routines with the families, um, to make sure that we're providing those supports. And then it's become a big focus for us. At back-to-school night, made a really big talk about attendance. We've had, um, coffees with the principal. We've talked about attendance as well, so really making those a really big piece. Kids can't learn if they're not at school, so we just really need to make sure that they're here. Um, there we have, with social, emotional learning, I've put a link, we have multiple curricula we're using. The teachers actually got a chance to choose which one they felt would work best with them. Um, and so we've got a number of different ones. If you want to look on the link later, you can have a look, and just links a different curriculum we're using. Um, we just made sure that we're, they're all using research-based practices, and they're doing that two or three times a week, um, working with students, with their classes. We're also starting the Friends for Youth Mentorship Program. We worked with, um, them in previous years very successfully, and we have a lot of fifth graders who are really excited to actually join that mentorship program that'll be starting in January. Then de-escalation strategies, coping skills, these are becoming things that we're really, uh, making sure that we're, um, we're teaching students, so they're actually aware of what they, that what they need to do for themselves. And that includes for our many students, individual calm-down boxes. So something with some fidgets or some putty or something like that, that'll actually help them regulate themselves. And then mental health check-ins. And I do want to highlight the fact that this year, we've had over 100 mental health check-ins. Those are generally around 20 minutes to, 20 to 30 minutes, depending, um, on the student's needs, but those are students advocating for those check-ins themselves. So we've really been making a lot of use for our, uh, mental health counselors. Um, and we're also currently, I will actually just add in, mental health in general, which does come down in the behavior part, but for that, we've got about 28 students who are receiving regular counseling services for the eight to 12 weeks, um, at the end of this trimester, and then we'll be moving on, and that's been individual and group, and we'll be, um, changing that up around second trimester as well for another group of students, who will then actually get that sort of eight to 12 weeks. Um, but within behavior, PBIS implementation, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, really implementing that strongly. Um, we've had PBS team that is working closely with the Santa Clara County, as well as doing a lot of work on campus to make sure that we really are creating a positive environment for our students. Um, we have calming corners in every classroom. We provide flexible seating for those students who actually need a little bit more regulation in terms of how they're sitting. Um, we've done a lot of celebrations in terms of behavior as well. We have, um, a theme for every month that the students are, um, working towards. I know last month was perseverance, and so each classroom got to name two students who really demonstrated that character trait. In December, we're looking at being responsible, and that's actually really important as well. So the students have lessons around it, and they're able to demonstrate it, and then the teachers actually choose those students who are part of it. Individualized token boards, so that would actually be students who really need that more individualized touch in terms of like, for every certain amount of time, they're getting a sticker or something along those lines. Typically, they're individualized, so if a child really loves Hello Kitty, it's tailored to that. If it's, they really like Mario Brothers, it's like, got things like that. So we've got all different kinds of things that are very individualized, so the kids really feel like they're earning something for themselves. Um, we have a student advisory group. We don't have a student council. We have a student advisory group that any student can actually sign up for. We have over 40 students who want to be part of our student advisory group. So we get a lot of student voice. We hear a lot from our students in terms of what they want to change, what they want to have input in. Um, and so that's actually really exciting for us. And then classroom and school incentives, and as I said, mental health support as needed. Sorry, we're doing a lot, so it does take me a while to go through it all. Um, the LCAP goal too has to do with our multilingual learners. Um, and I've lost my slide there, but anyway, um, as you can see, we've been making really good progress, um, with our, with our multilingual learners, um, in, across all different grades, we actually saw students increase. Um, and then in fact, when I was looking at the numbers, we had about, I think it was 70% of our students actually, um, either maintained or increased a level, um, last year, which is actually really strong results for us. Um, and we'll talk about why. So a big part of that, um, we have had designated ELD, English Language Development, now four to five days a week, so anywhere from 150 to 160 minutes, um, per week for all of our English learners or multilingual learners. Um, we did, we have done this in the past, but we're doing it a little differently this year. Um, we are utilizing Language Power. Um, it was introduced last year, but it's being fully implemented this year, um, in our classrooms. So students, uh, so our teachers really have a curriculum that can, can guide them in terms of that sort of thing. Um, and we're actually encouraging smaller groups, so our kindergarten through first grade actually work together, and they circle, if they've got smaller groups. Our fourth and fifth do the same. Second and third, um, aren't able to only because the curriculum is a K2 curriculum and a 3.5 curriculum. So second and third are meeting the needs a little bit differently, but still with ELD, um, four to five times a week. And then, um, our MTSS Tosa and our assistant principal are actually running a more intensive group. Um, and it's really exciting, because we had 13 students we named within the third through fifth grade, who, or second through fifth, second, third, third through fifth grade, who we designated as being much more intensive. So a lot of times they're newcomers, but newcomers with limited English. And so working really closely with them, four days a week, was actually exciting, because out of the 13, um, I can actually correct that slide. At the time, we were graduating one, but we actually have actually graduated three. Um, and then we're looking at probably at least three more graduate during the course of the year as well in terms of that really needing those intensive services, which is wonderful. Um, integrated ELD is really important to us. That's the, that's the, the English language development that occurs throughout the school day, across the, oh, across all the different content areas. We're actually working with a company called TCM, Teacher-Created Materials. Um, and so we've been working with them. We have five sessions with them across, um, three of them, or four of them focused on our third through fifth graders. We had one of them with our kindergarten through second grade. Our kindergarten through second grade teachers found it so useful that we've actually utilized some other monies that we had to bring them back in to work with our TK through second grade as well, to really focus on those integrated ELD strategies throughout the school day. Um, with the homeschool connection, we do have monthly ELAC meetings. Um, I think we're supposed to have about eight, seven to eight per year. We actually do them monthly. Um, and I will say, it's become a real. And I will say, it's become a real community meeting. I was at, today's was actually really nice as in terms of we did like a posada along with it. So it was a real celebration. All the parents shared actually what they really felt grateful for, whether it be personally or at school. So it's become a real community and the families really enjoy coming to it. A key component to that is the home learning. I've attached an example there, but today, the home learning piece they all got to take away with them was different activities they could do with their students, with their children over the winter break. So different things to keep them engaged. So those sort of pieces are just really important. Those families actually advocated very heavily to have bilingual books that they could check out from our library. So we've actually gone ahead and purchased some of those so that our families can actually purchase some, so they can actually check them out themselves as well, so they can read those with their children as well at home. So that's been a really successful piece there. And in terms of staffing support, so we have a newcomer instructional aide. She actually started in October. What we're actually utilizing her for, we have a halftime. And so she's coming in, she's actually pushing into our third through fifth grade classes who have newcomers, working with those students in their core content areas. So typically, language arts or math. And so she's really helping support them in that environment, which is really useful. So they're not being pulled out. They're actually getting that experience, that exposure, but they're actually being, information's being reinforced or the, the instruction. And then we also had a bilingual aide literally start last week, which is exciting, to work really with our kindergarten through second grade students as well and supporting them also in their core content areas primarily. And LCAP goal three really refers to our language arts and math growth. And so this is where some of the news is not as positive, but I think we have a lot of things in place to actually turn this around. And I think that's what's really important here. Our teachers are really collaborative, really working well together. We're all kind of all in this together in terms of making sure that we really do see some growth. I do want to highlight that on this slide, that we do have for 2024, it does include our eighth grade. And within our eighth grade, there were some challenges. We had a teacher for language arts who was working outside of her credential. And that we also had 40% of our students in eighth grade last year were students with disabilities. So it does actually shift some of that. It also includes our fifth grade from last year and obviously, as it will include our fifth grade from this year. But there were some challenges with that particular cohort as well, and you'll see that in a moment when we look at the cohort data. Because there were some challenges that were, some staffing concerns we had in fourth grade that impacted them certainly in fifth grade as well. And then it was also a group that was, had a large population, about 20% of the students with disabilities in fifth grade last year as well. So when we look at the cohort data, oh, sorry, that's the, my student groups. We have to own the fact that we really are underserving our Latino community, that our rate, that our white students are outperforming all of our other subgroups. And that's something we have to look very carefully at. I think a big part of that is looking at that integrated ELD part that we were talking about. We're looking at the previous LCAP goal. So that's making sure that all the core content area, whether it be English language arts or math, is actually being raised for all of our students and their access to that. And then we look at cohorts. As I said, our current sixth grade had some significant challenges in terms of staffing when they were in fourth grade, which has actually impacted them in fifth. So that's the group where you can see the decline, the current sixth graders. Sixth graders are obviously no longer at our school. They're now at Kennedy MIT. Our current fifth grade, so they actually saw some really good jumps. So there's some really, there's some really positive upswings as well as we're looking at that in terms of our current student body. And so the, I'm just making sure I've got all the slides. There we go. We are starting to see a dip in the students who are three or more years below grade level. And so we're just making sure, we're trying to really work hard on increasing the other levels and making sure we're increasing particularly those students who arrive at or above grade level to make sure that we see a shift in that over the next year. As we start to look at math, it's actually really exciting to see the growth in our math scores. Our teachers are really embracing the new math curriculum, the illustrative math curriculum. This is our second year of full implementation. So last year, a lot of the teachers were really learning it, but we're really diving in and doing an amazing job. This year, when you go into classrooms, it looks almost seamless. And so the teachers really have done an amazing job. And I think that's where we're starting to see that swing return. Again, though, I do have to say that our white students are significantly outperforming our other subgroups. And that is something that we will continue to work on. And I think one of the things, I will say illustrative math is very language focused. So if we can continue to work on raising our English language proficiency, then I think that will continue to impact math instruction as well as language arts instruction. And as I said earlier, with our current sixth grade, they were impacted by fourth grade. And bearing in mind that fifth grade math builds significantly across fourth grade math. I myself was a former fourth and fifth grade teacher, so I'm well aware of how much fourth grade math can impact fifth grade math. And unfortunately, we did see a negative influence there. But in saying that, we're seeing really strong growth in terms of our current students. So I think that's a lot to build upon. Interestingly, with our fall diagnostic, we have not seen a lot of fluctuation over the last three years, even though we actually did see a fair bit of fluctuation in terms of the SBAK scores. So I think, I would like to say that we will start to see a shift in terms of really dropping that red group, the group that is actually three or more years below grade level as we continue to do some different things. But we really want to see an increase in that early on grade level or mid or above grade level groups. So we really want to see those blues and blue and green bands increase over the next So this is a real meat and potatoes in terms of the things that we really are focusing on. In terms of instructional strategies, we've got a really strong instructional focus. All of our staff newsletters, all of our staff meetings are very instructionally focused. How can we really make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students? And that's been just really, really important in terms of making sure it continues to be at the forefront. The urgency is very much there in terms of what we need to do for our students. Really, not only are we expecting certain instructional minutes in terms of language arts and math and English language development, but going in there and actually making sure that those things are happening to make sure that the small group instruction is happening, to make sure all of those things are there. And it's, it really is, it's amazing to walk into a lot of the classrooms and see all of these things happening and seeing the shift, which is really exciting. One of the things we realized is that we, the district brought on some new foundational skills work for kindergarten through second grade last year. We'd already started to see a need in that prior to that. So we actually last year brought in a phonics program for third through fifth grade, which we're continuing this year. What that means is third and fourth grade actually have daily phonics instruction, foundational skills instruction. Our fifth grade is doing it in their small groups for the students who really need it. Where actually, when I say supported weekly grade level planning sessions, each grade level is meeting together. And then we're supporting it with either myself, we have a staff development coach who's working four days a week at our site, or MTSS TOSA, or assistant principal. One of us is in those meetings as well to really keep that focus on instruction, on data, on planning, and those sorts of things, which are really important. The small group instruction for reading is daily. It's also making sure that as teachers are planning, their small group focus, they're also looking also to make sure the other students are actually doing very standards-based activities as well. So making sure that the level of rigor is really raised, students are making sure they're academically focused. And I think that's just really important. The teachers are getting support as they need it for their small group. So certainly to sort of kick it off to make sure it's happening, any materials they need, we're happy to purchase for them. Math is typically about three times a week, two to three times a week depending on need. And that's when the teachers will typically pull together some of those intervention groups that they need to have in their classrooms. With the small group language, reading instruction, oftentimes it'll provide the extension and the challenge for the students who need the extension and challenge and the intervention for those students who need it. With math, it's typically more of an intervention focus. We talk about authentic daily writing, and I really want to talk about that. It's not just like, what did you do over the weekend? Write a short journal entry. But it's actually responses more to academic prompts. For example, and I said, today I actually worked with the fourth grade team in their grade level planning session. And they working on a narrative currently, but we were reviewing some of their responses to opinion writing. And so they've got this strategy called the RACE strategy. You probably see it in a variety of classrooms. But basically, restating the question, answer the question, citing evidence and explaining how the evidence supports the answer. And they're actually continuing to do that even though they're working on narratives, so telling stories and that sort of thing. They're continuing to at least do a little paragraph of that once or twice a week, focusing on that piece to build those skills as well. So it's constantly really looking at how they can develop the writing. We're also creating a, oh, I shouldn't, I'll talk about that a little bit later, professional development. But we also have, doing a lot of work around the analysis of test questions and the strategies for answering those. I think a lot of times, we haven't done as much of that in the past. We really want to put a focus back on that, not the drill and kill type of test, test practice, but more authentically, how can we weave these types of questions students are going to be exposed to in their regular instruction as well? How can they analyze and look at the strategies they need to answer them? And the PLCs district-wide, but we're doing those for six to eight week increase cycles, which I think are really good. We've put a heavy focus on language arts for those, which I think is really important because when we look at what our need is, specifically in that area. And another big piece is the math focus walls in the classrooms. We talk about really focusing on the vocabulary, the strategies they need for the skill, but also the Spanish vocabulary, the Spanish cognates as well. So that the students, even those who are Spanish speaking, will have access to the math and as well. So I think that's just really important to embrace that piece of it. So I'm going through this really quickly, but trying to forge through. For intervention, we actually have two reading intervention specialists. One works primarily with our kindergarten through second grade, and the other one works with our third through fifth grade to really work closely with those students who need, some of the students who just need a little bump to get there to where they need to be in grade level, other students who are a couple of years below grade level near something a little bit more intensive. We're really working on identifying and addressing needs early. A big part of that is our weekly screen team, when we do talk about that in terms of different students who've been raised as they, we have some concerns. Wendy, our MTSS TOSA is working with fourth and fifth grade students specifically on some math intervention to catch up on some of those basic skills that they will need. We also have, we have a guest teacher who's doing, spending 10 minutes a day individually working with certain at-risk kindergarten students. Those students are coming in with very limited alphabet skills. They don't necessarily know their letters. And really working with multisensory tools and strategies to actually help the students have access to then advance in their own kindergarten classrooms. And then we have after-school tutoring. We have CAP who's doing math tutoring right now and air reading, which is doing reading tutoring after school, and they're working with one of our after-school programs and providing that support to our students. And in professional development, our teachers have been incredibly open to really looking at, at receiving coaching, but also to being observed, to going in to observe their peers and also being observed as well, which has been really good in terms of the strategies we can all learn from each other. And they're really open to doing that, which has just been really amazing. We have a staff development coach who's working with us four days a week. And so she's really been supporting a lot of the teachers in terms of really providing them that coaching, going into modeling lessons, you know, co-teaching with our teachers, which I think is really important. And then one of the things that the teachers have actually come to us about, when we talked about what our different needs were, is they want some additional professional development in reading comprehension. And I've actually been talking to Anna about that and about how we can actually provide that for our teachers. And the other thing is we, they want some additional writing. So what we talked about is creating a writing implementation team. We're starting that work in January. The team is, is being put together now to really look at different writing programs and how we can support the writing in our classrooms. And the last piece I just want to talk about is I think it's really important to celebrate growth at our trimester awards assemblies. We really looked at the students, we really celebrated the students who demonstrated growth in reading, growth in writing, and growth in math, as opposed to necessarily just the best scores, which I think is a really important thing to celebrate. And along with that, we actually celebrated the students that reclassified as well, because I think that's again, another sign of growth. So any, so thank you very much for all your time. I went through that fairly quickly, but are there any questions?
Again, thank you so much for you and everyone that works at Roosevelt. Question regarding the phonics third through fifth. And I apologize, you might have said it and I'm like writing and kind of thinking at the same time. Is this something that just started like this year or you've had?
We actually started it across third through fifth last year. So we were doing all of last year and this year. Third grade actually did it the previous year. And that's where we saw a really good jump with our third graders, which is why we then decided to implement it third through fifth.
Okay, so definitely you've seen the difference.
Yes.
And then with the daily writing, I appreciate that. I'm sure the kids will too, and you know, teachers moving forward. And also again, is this something new? And you probably said it, and I apologize if you did. Again, is this something new that you're in?
This actually is new. Yes.
Okay. And then new as of like August. So basically, it's just been a few months. And even if so, have you seen any improvement with the students' writing skills?
I think individual students certainly have been able to demonstrate some growth. I was able to literally today work with analyzing some of the writing with the fourth grade team. And I think it's, it's really helping in terms of providing that structure for students. And I think the more they get that structure, the better they will become. Have we seen immediate growth in the last three months, three to four months? It's hard because they've been introducing the topics each time. But I think probably if you ask me again in about a month or two, I will probably be able to answer much more positively or definitively to say yes.
Okay, thank you. And then with the math intervention, obviously, we're doing fourth and fifth grade and working with those kids that are, you know, that need that math intervention. But I'm just wondering, and can we do more of like a prevention that, rather than an intervention at an earlier grade? I mean, and maybe, and maybe you could just explain that to me as, you know, as an educator.
So I think illustrative math is a new curriculum brought in last year. And I think that's providing an amazing foundation for all of our students because it's a consistent math program kindergarten through fifth, which I think is really good. I think what we're doing is that small math groups instruction two to three times a week is what was going to be providing more of that preventative piece as well. So the students who are struggling with a particular skill, they can get them in there at that point in time and meet with the small group in the classroom rather than removing them from the later on. So what we're looking at, so from the intervention piece, I think the fourth and fifth graders did not have the benefit of a strong curriculum for the last four years. And so it's actually being able to provide them with some of that intervention now for those foundational skills in math. But I think our students are actually getting it through the current curriculum. And then that small group piece will be a little bit more preventative as well.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Hi Tina. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your presentation. And thank you to everybody who's here in the audience and for all that you do and for those that are online. I really appreciate all the teachers and staff and parents and everybody. And I love coming out to Roosevelt. I've actually been able to come out to a number of the promotion ceremonies, graduation ceremonies recently. And I have made it out to back-to-school nights and things like that. So I, I just love coming to Roosevelt. And I, I think I, you know, censure frustration and I feel the same way. A lot of what we see going on and the dedication that the teachers have and the students are trying and the parents and all of that doesn't necessarily translate to the, to the academic data that we want to see, right? So anyway, so I have a, so I really appreciated you giving us a sense of all the different sort of extras you're doing and interventions and that sort of thing. And unfortunately, my screen has disappeared again. I was going to try to look something. Can you help me? I think what's happened, it keeps timing out. So I, anyway, I keep losing my presentation, but I was going to go back to something there. But I, I did want to say, I really appreciate the focus on attendance. Because clearly, as you just said, and we talk about that a lot, we've got to have the kids in school. And I know that, you know, COVID was just such a problem for everybody. And we actually all just got back from the California School Boards Association where up and down the state, that's true, across the United States, it's true, certainly impacted our students who are very school-dependent and need more from us. I mean, we were not able to provide everything we wanted to provide, even though we were providing a lot. So anyway, attendance is great and it does look like it's getting back to kind of, it[1736.60] So anyway, attendance is great and it does look like it's getting back to kind of, it was even below the 2019 levels, which was, I think if I understood that correctly.
It was the lowest since, so 2021 was kind of when kids were logging in online. So it was very, the attendance was probably not accurate in terms of attendance per se. But yeah, so it's certainly the lowest since the kids have returned.
Right, right. Cause I, I, anyway. Um, so anyway, thank you for all the work on there. You're clearly doing really individualized attention. I mean, if you've got alarm clocks and I mean, all the things you were naming, helping them with bedtime routines. But you know, that's great because an adult, sometimes I'm out in our community. In fact, we, well, we were out in Anaheim, which is where this conference was. And we went out to dinner and we were out late and we saw all these families with young kids and we're like, oh my, we were like, all of us, school board members and superintendents, like, why aren't these kids in school? So anyway, I do think helping our parents understand the importance of getting them to bed on time and you know, all of that makes a difference. So I love the homeschool connection that you talked about. Um, so thank you, because obviously we've all got to be working together. And bilingual books out to parents, you know, when I first started 17 years ago, we did not have as many bilingual books as we do now. I mean, I was just in the libraries the last couple of weeks at different school sites. We have so many more and I know that's been building over time. Um, so that's awesome. And I love that we're providing those out. So let's see, um, I did have a question. How many, about how many newcomers do you have?
We have, just a, I'm trying to think actually, we have about 20.
Okay. So it's in the twenties.
Twenty-two?
Okay. That, that's fine. I was just getting sense because you mentioned newcomers and I was wondering if that was also a part of the, the data maybe, but that's a smaller number. So if it was really large, it might be. And, oh, they, can we take the math?
Only if it's within their first year though.
Oh, okay. Okay. Great. Okay. Um, let's see. So I did have a question like, so what, you know, you talked about a lot of different things that you're doing, uh, which I really appreciate. And it seems like probably a lot of the grade level, well, I'm curious, actually I should ask the question because I, um, this is my assumption. So the grade level work that needs to happen, um, is around reading comprehension, kind of language acquisition. So it's not so much, I mean, it's, you know, obviously when you have social studies or whatever, you've got substance there too. But it seems like is a lot of it than the focus, just helping the kids get the language acquisition, the reading, the comprehension?
It's a combination of a lot of different things. So we really put,
Speak to that.
We're just trying to make sure that the grade level is meeting every week to make sure that it's collaborative and making sure all the, so everything is on par. So what one fourth grade class is doing, another fourth grade class is doing something very similar. So we're building those skills combined together. Um, I always believe that collaboration, different ideas can actually work more positively. But clearly a focus for us is definitely on those language arts skills. So even if they're specifically looking, they're saying this year, this week, we really want to work on our writing assignment for social studies. But we're building in those language arts skills in terms of how are we going to evaluate that? How are we going to actually look at those pieces? So really making sure that we're looking at assessments in terms of whether it be rubrics for writing, whether it be look at certain scores that we were actually looking at, what kinds of questions are the students struggling with, say even in math? If they're looking at, you know, it depends on what they specifically want to plan for. But if they're looking at math, what kinds of questions are the students really struggling with? How can we go about actually shifting our instruction to actually make sure that we're able to do that?
Yeah. Yeah. Cause it's hard to see those three, you know, two and three grade level below. So, I mean, I'm assuming clearly there's got to be some language acquisition or reading component, right? So anyway, the more we can encourage that, and I'm glad to see you're now doing, you know, doing phonics in third to fifth grade because, you know, many of our, our teachers in the early grades know, you know, are trained to do that, but not necessarily the other ones. So anyway, good. So, um, what more do you think we can do to help support the growth to make it happen?
A list. I'm kidding.
You know, in term, I mean, I know you, we've got a lot of new things we've thrown at you with curriculum and you know, all that. But is there anything that you just feel like is missing that we need to know about?
Um, I think we, the downside to being, having the test scores we had, brought us into comprehensive school, the CSI status. The plus side is it actually did provide us with a lot of resources and we're actually really accessing those resources. Been working very closely with Anna to actually make sure we have a lot of those supports in place. Um, working with TCM for that additional integrated, um, ELD program, we're doing five sessions with them. And then we're adding another two as well for our lower grades, really trying to make things a lot more uniform. So I will say that I appreciate the instructional rounds that the, um, cabinet members are doing, which is really beneficial for us in terms of Fridays on that input. But it also provides us with access as well in terms of saying, this is what we might need help in, or this is what our teachers are saying. This is what our families are saying, and that kind of things. We have that access. So as a board, I think we receive a lot of support from you, but really we are getting the support we need from the district as well.
Okay. Good. Good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then finally, I was just curious, are you still doing project-based learning? I know, you know, that used to be the big focus of the school and I know we've had a lot of turnover and staff and things, but just curious about that.
I will say not really. And right now our focus is very much on making sure that we are doing really high quality language arts and math instruction, looking at that real core instruction, rather than focusing on the project-based learning piece of it. In saying that, a lot of our staff who are trained on that, we've had a lot of turnover since right before the pandemic. And so we don't have, we haven't had consistent training on it either. Um, so I would like to see when our test scores go up, I would love to be able to bring it back in a real way. I think we're trying to utilize a lot of the communication and collaboration and 21st century skills that PBL was really good at and really trying to incorporate that into what we do. But no, I would not say we're a formal PBL school anymore, unfortunately.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. And I'm assuming, I mean, this wasn't part of the presentation, but that you still do have some music, art, PE,
Yes.
the enrichment sorts of things. I mean, every school should have that. Okay. All right. Just wanted to double check.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks Lisa.
Yeah. Thank you Tina and Roosevelt team for, uh, presenting. Um, it's clear there's just extreme dedication to improving the outcomes for all the students at your school. Lot of, great deal of like really thoughtful planning is going in and effort, um, to address the key challenges. Um, there are a few things that really leaped out, um, like the sixth grade cohort, the discrepancy between the subgroups. And thank you for addressing that just directly, um, and you know, explaining where the problems were and, and how to address it. Um, also there was great progress for chronic absenteeism. Thank you for sharing the strategies that worked well. Um, the suspension rates have improved. Um, uh, I have a question about that though, and, and then the LPAC growth. On the suspension rates though, uh, you know, again, this is last year's data. And so maybe it is related just to those upper grades. So I don't know what you're seeing this year so far for suspensions, but it was still really pretty concerning last year. I mean, some of the subgroups were up at like four and a half, 5% I think. So is that happening again this year or is it?
We've had one student suspended this year.
All right. So that's, it really has changed.
It really has shifted. Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, the other one, uh, the, 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 the presentation does highlight all the progress for LPAC growth, um, which is awesome, uh, going up in the levels. But on the goal slide, it says that it's got a reclassification target of 20%. So like, what are kind of the key challenges of being able to achieve that reclassification rate?
Um, I think we have a number of students who are sort of, who arrive to us as level ones. And so we've really got to make sure they're continuing to grow one full level every year. And I think that's where really the focus on designated ELD and having a strong curriculum, which was started halfway through the year last year. This is really the first year of full implantation. And so I think that's going to actually really benefit our students. It's a great curriculum in the sense that it doesn't require a ton of planning and not a ton of additional work for the teachers. They just have to bring in a lot of the really amazing strategies they're learning, um, through some of the professional development we're doing. But it's going to actually really provide, if every student is growing one level, then we really have to look at those level threes and level fours, making sure they're reclassifying. Um, because the level ones, we're not expecting 20% of them to reclassify. We want them to become level twos.
Right.
So if I could see 99% of our students move up a level, you know, we would end up ultimately seeing a lot of these students reclassify.
Cool. And it sounds like, I mean, clearly throughout your presentation, it's clear that ELD is an important, you know, it's kind of like a keystone for like all of the success that you're hoping to see students achieve academically. Um, what's your data telling you now? Like we saw the iReady there, but that was just kind of like a point in time.
And that was August. So.
Exactly. Like what, what is, what is your data telling now, telling you now? Are the strategies that you have in place effective? Are the action items that you've listed as something, things that you're already seeing meaningful change from? Are there, are there changes that have to, that have to come?
Um, I think with math in particular, we're definitely seeing, I, I should write honestly, the math in particular is really seeing a lot of growth and we're able to track that more readily because we can actually see the chapter tests and the unit assessments and that type of thing. Um, within language arts, we've actually, for our lower grades, we've done the assessment called BPST. Um, as we've done that for the lower grades, have only done that for the students who are struggling more than a, more than a year, two years below grade level in, um, in reading. So we've only done that for that group multiple, uh, twice already this year. The iReady, we're not doing again until, uh, January and then right, March. We're probably going to be doing in January though. So we, because we do want to get that dipstick. So we're going to be doing it in January, um, just to get a taste for how well is this working? How well are our students doing? Um, and then as a district, we actually did something called the FIAB, so the interim assessments. And that's happening this week and we're wrapping up, I think next week. Um, and that's going to be also a chance for us to really look at how our students are doing on something looks an awful lot like the statewide assessments.
Okay. And then, you know, you had a couple of strategies in there that I was just wondering how, how the teachers are being supported for it. The, the two that kind of jumped out to me were the, um, you, you started talking about it a bit, the daily authentic, the authentic daily writing. Um, but also the small group instructions, like how, how are, you know, different sites have different strategies for how they do the small group instruction. Like how, how are your teachers being supported for that?
So they're creating the groups and they're creating groups based on assessments. And obviously the kids can move within those groups as they, um, develop. But from that, we're actually going in, if anybody needs support, some of our lower grade teachers are really used to doing them. They've been doing reading groups and they can, we have them, we purchased a lot of the materials they needed last year as well. So they've actually got a lot of the materials they can use for that small group reading. For our upper groups, we're actually, we've been talking to them about how they actually facilitate that. So some kids they might meet with once a week. So our kids who are sort of close to grade level, at grade level. So it might be more of a reading, they're reading a book of sort of a book club kind of thing in terms of how we're actually going through that. So really talking through the different strategies for the different groups. So I think that's just become really important because sometimes as a fourth and fifth grade teacher, like, I'm not sure how to do that small group reading piece because it's not something that traditionally fourth and fifth grade teachers have had to do. So providing them with that piece. We, as I said, we have staff development coach who's working with the teachers. Um, many of the teachers actually have been very open in saying, I need some help with this. Can you help me? And we do. We have two guest teachers and when we can, they push in during some of that time to at least help establish what the rest of the class is doing while the teacher is actually walking, working with that small group to kind of create that practice. And then teachers are doing that successfully.
Okay, great. And then you had mentioned a couple, um, professional developments that, that the teachers were asking for. But like of the ones that they're already having, like what, what have, what have they found to be the most impactful?
Um, the really focus on integrated ELD has been really, that's been a really big focus in terms of district wide for the professional development. Um, and as I said, at our site, they found it really impactful, so much so that their TK through second grade actually asked for more. Um, because they were not the focus of it originally. It was third through fifth. But we get, they had sort of one session with them and like, this is really good. We need more of this. So we've actually contracted with the person we're working with, the TCM to come another couple of times. So they are finding it impactful. We appreciate that they're asking for it. Um, when we looked at what some of our carryover funds were, um, and a couple of things, they actually said, this is what our priority is. So really trying to make sure that our teachers feel heard and we can then go ahead and sort of implement some of those practices too.
Great. Thank you. Um, then I had a.
Can I add just onto that? Because I think one of the things that the TCM that we've done is very, we've been very intentional about the type of modeling we want to have with TCM. And, um, Tina is very fortunate to have a really dynamic coach that comes in and, um, it's not only she's demoing with teachers, she does a demonstration, they debrief. We're now going into the next step. We've done some of that now, the last three visits. Our next one is really going digging into the planning for language learners. And so we're going, not only doing demonstrations, but also planning for what they're going to be doing. And so I think it's that deep planning with someone that's a, that really can help guide. Not only is she guiding them, but she's also working with all our district coaches on skills and how to implement some of the strategies that we're doing district wide at all our sites. So we have the benefit of Kim, who's our TCM, who really has been working with us closely with Catherine and myself and really working on creating more of a, for all our ATS I, CSI schools in depth about what we really want to do. Um, empower our teachers and really dedicated planning time, because that's really what is needed to move some of this forward. And so Tina has been had, and I have to just add, the other day when we were visiting Tina, her, her kinder teacher came in, she's like, I'm so excited that we have our coach coming and she's coming again. She goes, I forgot some of the strategies that we've had to do and I'm so excited to start this again and my kids are doing this. And so she was just going on and on and on. And I think it was very exciting because I think for her, it was just like, I, I, I'm invigorated again to start this all over again, which I think sort of got lost after the pandemic. So it's been great to see the teachers be very happy receiving that.
Great. That's really good to hear. Um, okay. Now my last question is actually for this group here. Do you think it would be more helpful to see like student growth on the slides as opposed to just like the percent of students meeting or exceeding the standard? Like the cohort data is really powerful, right? It kind of shows you that growth, but for everything else. How many hours did we spend on this Tuesday, Monday? Like three. So. Yeah.
Yeah. I got a little bit of it, but it was hard to read because it's like, that's from the S facts still. I don't.
Right, right, right. So it's, it, we're working with Jenny, but, and we're trying to see who else can help us with this. We spent three hours and what grade levels were we looking at? I can't even remember anymore.
Fifth grade.
We were following, was it fifth? And, and because of the skilled score, it's, it's a nightmare. So we're trying to work with Jenny and we're trying to see what are, what other outside entity can help us. You know, after we had that, that was three hours and there were four of us in there trying to figure this out. And then had Jenny, but getting Jenny online with questions and so forth. You know, maybe we should ask the Gardner Center and see what they can, how they can help us with it.
Yeah, something we, I mean, cause like the cohort.
You can't just pull it from the.
Oh.
No. And I sent it to Mike a little bit of a snippet.
I couldn't understand. Yeah. But thank you. I appreciate that.
This is, I was just trying to give you a snippet of what we get.
Yeah.
Um, because there's ranges and you can fall within a range and you can move up a range, but still build, still be far below basic versus right. So you can make some growth, but it doesn't, the state doesn't really tell us the areas that we really need to work on. It just gives us a number or, you know, a percentage. And so I was trying to give them, because there's a range of all of that information, but this is what we have to, to work with and what Jenny works with when she's looking at some of the data. So it's really hard because it doesn't really give us much information. I ready, we tried doing that with I ready last year and it's also, everything goes to scale scores.
Right.
So you move within these bandwidth. So it's really hard to really, we can say there's growth and we see that kids are moving down, the numbers are rising, but it really doesn't tell us exactly what we need to do to really move them forward. And it's really hard. And for like our BPST data, the hardest part of BPST, um, is because it's a teaching tool, you really can't put a number. You look at, you know, kindergarten, it's letter IDs and letter sound. So you, you know, you have 26 out of 26. That's very easy to. But then when they get, once they master that, they move into these other discrete skills. And they can be in, they're, you know, all their, they're testing them in all these discrete skills. They can be five here, two here, zero, zero, and then it stops. And then the next semester they keep building upon those discrete skills. So it's not like we can capture a number to say that this number, we can show you how the things go from red to green on individual school sites, and you can see that progress, but we can't really give it a number. Um, because it's, it's a, it's a moving target. It's not stagnant. So that's part of the, that's part of the challenges with our new assessments in terms of phonics.
Yeah.
Foundational skills. Um, but the other parts have been more of the, um, for math, one of the things we are starting to do and next year we're going to solidify more are those math scores. Um, right now, because it's really our first, I, I see as our first full year of implementation of math. We're having a dipstick of teachers doing the assessments. And one of the things we want to get, have teachers do next year is really continue to track those assessments more. And I think Tina's been doing that a little bit more at her site than other sites. So she can actually start seeing where the, where kids are falling on those methods.
And those are just kind of like the regular lesson, chapter assessments that would be going on.
Checkpoints during the course. Yeah. We, we actually collect the checkpoints during. So sometimes some kids are struggling with the checkpoints, but they do amazingly on the assessment.
Yeah.
Little bit less likely, more likely kids are actually doing really well in the checkpoints and they struggle a little bit, the assessment. So that's when the teachers need to say, what is it in the, what, what question or questions within the assessment are the students really struggling with? And how do I need to make sure I'm building that in instruction?
Yeah, that's, that's super important for in the classroom for sure. Um, I just think for sort of tracking progress of like the major programs that we're putting in, like unlocking that growth indicator would be incredibly powerful. Cause as much, as meaningful as like seeing the cohort data is for, you know, how they're doing year over year in terms of meeting the standard. When it's like only 20% that are making it, there's all 80% that we're totally blind to. We have no idea how they're doing. Are they, you know, are they growing? Are they going anywhere? And it feels like we're just kind of, you know, like remiss in our jobs here. So.
And can I just say with the cohort data with, not with the cohort data, with the, um, fall diagnostic, when we're looking at that data, um, it says there's a large group that's in yellow, sort of one year below. But in actual fact, for a fourth grader who's coming out with a third grade score, it doesn't say late third, which might be where a lot of the kids are. It doesn't say early third. It'll just say third grade, which effectively puts them a year below, but they may only be a month or two below.
Right. Yeah. And it doesn't tell you, have they been new to the school or like any of the other circumstances out there? Okay. Anyway, uh, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Um, because of my, my migraine, I'm not going to talk much tonight. So did you want to share anything?
I just wanted to, um, it's been really, a really eye-opening and also very pleasant, uh, when we've done our rounds. And Tina, you were one of the first schools that we started with Wendy and I did. And when we got to see some of the staff development, the PD in action, especially with Kim, which was amazing. And I can understand why the teachers are asking for this PD to come back. I mean, when you see how she has the children engaged, how she's working with children that are at different levels. And they're all actually moving. And they're all actually moving in the direction in which we want them to move. So, so I get that. So Anna, that was a really great company to come and work with our CSI schools and also the ATS I schools. Um, one of the things that I'm, I'm very pleased with and proud of is the peer observation. That is something that is really going well at your school, which she, she alluded to. And our teachers do, are embracing it. Where many times teachers are, you know, it's my classroom and I just want to stay in my classroom. But you're embracing it and they're, they're learning from one another. And they've got the, they've got the planning time to take this on. And then you've got your team with you, you've got Vero, who's, who's here tonight, Veronica, who's here tonight. We also have Wendy, who's here tonight, who always, it's, it's a great team to move it forward. So I was very pleased, I know we had some other discussions about other things, which you're working on, which is great. And you are making them, you are making a headway on what I asked you to do. And the other piece is, um, whenever you read Tina's staff, when you ever read her, her, her letter that goes out. There's, you get the staff letter also, and here's what the expectations are, this is what we're doing. It's a constant reminder, so thank you for doing that. I like reading them, it's very informative. So at least when I go in, I know, I, I know a bit that's going on. But I think it's been, um, a pleasure not only for us as district administrators to be at the school sites. But it's, and it's very eye opening to see what's happening at each school site and how you're taking it, moving it forward, which you and your team are doing. So thank you so much.
We appreciate you being there, thank you.
Well, thank you to, um, the staff who are here tonight to support your principal and, um, there's people online also. So thank you for your time and, um, well done.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Um, oh, we have consent items, so we can do that. Yeah, that's.
I'll move to approve that consent agenda.
A second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so I think we should take a break before we hop into our next item. Um, five minutes, 10 minutes, what do you guys want? Five minutes, okay, take a five minute break. All right, uh, we are, uh, what are we? Um, 9.1 approval, no, yes, approval of budget renewal initiative.
Okay, let me get, make sure. I need to go to mine. Cause I have, all right. Good evening, everyone. And it looks like we have a pretty good, um, group of people out there in the audience also. So, uh, tonight I'll be presenting my recommendations as part of the budget renew, renewal initiative. Uh, these recommendations are result, uh, uh, these recommendations are the result of a difficult but necessary process that we've been through. While the committee provided valuable feedback and the majority of these recommendations are driven by survey results. Reflecting our community's priorities, these recommendations are ultimately mine. The recommendations aim to proactively align Redwood City School District's budget with long-term fiscal realities. While prioritizing services and support for our students. I want to extend my appreciation to the entire Redwood City School District community for the invaluable input throughout this process. Two important points to make about this presentation. The present, this presentation does not capture all the services provided across the district at our schools. While I'll, uh, excuse me, while I will highlight specific recommendations here. Our schools will continue to offer a wide range of core services and enrichment programs essential to student learning and to student success. Also, this presentation is about the unique situation that all California public schools are experiencing. Throughout California, school districts are going through similar processes. Discussing how and what adjustments to make as one-time pandemic funds come to an end. This board item is to address one-time funds and the allocation put forth as a result of the pandemic. And the return from the pandemic. Over the next several months, the district will also be examining the typical yearly review of programs and services. At a future board meeting in February, the board will review the normal cycle of expected staffing adjustments due to enrollment for the following school year. The one-time funds, funds were received, the one-time funds that we received were invaluable. And providing much-needed services to help our students recover from the pandemic. However, as those funds come to an end, the district has an obligation to ensure we remain fiscally responsible while continuing to support the success and the well-being of our students. Next slide, Wendy. So the, this evening's agenda, definitely we're going to talk about the purpose of the budget renewal initiative, why we did this. The community engagement highlights, the superintendent recommendation number one, which is the reduction of district and school administrators. We're going to also be talking about the committee recommendation here to engage our principals and school site councils. Next slide, please. And then recommendation number three, adjust staffing due to ongoing declining enrollment. Recommendation four, to streamline the special education staffing and services. And then there is community ideas to further explore. And that was brought forth by the, uh, budget committee. And I felt it necessary, even though, um, it's uncomfortable to look at these, but to bring them forth as this was something that the budget committee actually said, you should think about and at some time within the next, you know, year to two years, think about, is there something more that we have to do? That's related to A, B, and C, and you'll see that on this, on one of the slides. Okay. Next slide. So the purpose of the budget initiative, next slide, please, Wendy. So we want to make sure that we are financial, financial, that we have a financial stability as a pandemic era, those funds and those funds were great. It's how schools should be funded all the time, but they have ended. We want to make sure that we align the budget with long-term fiscal realities. We wanted to make sure that we engaged our Redwood City School District community. And we want to maintain high-quality education for all our students. Next slide, please, Wendy. So here we have our guiding principles. We wanted our community to be part of this process, know the challenges we are facing. And we need to work together to solve them, knowing how complex education funding can be. We made sure we answered all the questions from committee members and parents during our community meetings. And I'm very grateful for the business services staff for the additional time they worked during this process, sharing their expertise with our community. While we work with the budget committee, committee and community, we wanted to make sure there was transparency. We had the engagement and we had support and understanding of what was happening. Next slide, please. So the community engagement process here, we had, our committee was made up of parents, staff, administrators, and two board members sat on this committee. We also had a website created by our communications director that served as the information hub for information that was not only discussed at the budget committee meetings, but also anything that was brought forth by committee members. We had a digital publication that was sent out after each step in the process, so people knew what was happening. And the district did put out a district survey where we received almost 2,000 participants. School, whoops, I, school site councils, uh, were made, they made local budget decisions and district staff attended some of the, I would say, attended each of these meetings, some district staff did. ELACs and D-LAC, the district staff attended several meetings with the D-LAC and ELAC representatives. And then we did the same type of meetings that we did with our budget committee on our B-side. Uh, portion of the district in Spanish. And we, those, those meetings were very well attended. We wanted to make sure that instead of having translations, that we would just do it all in one language. So there wouldn't be any differences of understanding of what was being talked about, what was being mentioned, or how we were going to be moving forward. But it's very pleased about the number of parents that attended those meetings. Next slide. So the highlights, uh, the community engagement highlights, next slide. So this slide, you will see that, um, 60% parents, the majority of the respondents identified as parents. Reflecting a strong interest from families in preserving services essential to their children's education. 19% were teachers, a significant portion of respondents were our teachers whose frontline experience provided critical insights into district needs. 13% were classified staff and our classified staff members contributed practical perspective on operational and support needs. 7% were school and district administrators. And these participants shared their knowledge of resource management and the complexities of maintaining equitable services. And 3% were neighbors and community members. This group expressed broader perspective of the Redwood City School District's role within the local community. Next slide. Survey respondents were also affiliated with a wide range of schools and grade levels. Ensuring the feedback reflected the district's diverse educational landscape. Schools with the most engagement included Hoover Community School, North Star Academy, Roy Cloud, Orion Alternative Mandarin Immersion Program and Mandarin Immersion Program, Kennedy Middle School. District staff thoughtfully reviewed this feedback, which contributed to my final recommendations that align with the district's financial priorities. Next slide. So we're going to be talking about recommendation number one. And that's coming from me in regard to district and school administrators, next slide, I'm in. So this proposal here is to reduce seven FTE district and school administrators funded in the general fund. Saving 1.5 million dollars. There are 6.2 FTE that are at the school sites. You'll see the 2.0 FTE at the district office and you will see the rationale. This recommendation is based on an analysis, a service prioritization in which the survey participants identified both school and district administrators as the least needed services relative to other areas. It is important to note that all TK fought, TK through fifth grade assistant principal positions and one classified management position were created as an additional support during the pandemic. A period with unique operational challenges. The two district level positions have always existed, but are now being reconsidered as part of the restructuring effort. As these positions are eliminated or shifted, other administrators will assume additional responsibilities, including those related to compliance with the state and federal reporting requirements. While this distribution ensures, ensures continuity, it will result in a slower response, slower response times for supporting schools due to the increased responsibility on remaining services. Now, as I go through this, uh, at the end, we can go back, if you have questions and go, we'll go to this, go back to the slides. Uh, next slide, please, Wendy. So, uh, this recommendation is number two and it talks about district office staff positions. So you will see the positions that are proposed on this slide. And the elimination of these district-wide positions reflects the need to address the physical, physical stabilization while improving organizational efficiency. As pandemic relief funds expire, the district must prior, prioritize resources for school-based services and classroom instruction, which the community asked the district to make, to make in the district survey. By streamlining, streamlining roles and distributing responsibilities, the district must maintain essential functions while aligning with the community feedback that identified district office functions as lower priority. This strategic adjustment ensures fiscal responsibility with minimal direct impact on students and schools. Next slide, please, Wendy. This was a committee recommendation that meant to, that really wanted, um, me to take it back to the principals, as we had discussed earlier individually during your individual meetings. And also just have a report out at the board meeting that the committee, the next slide, that the committee, um, felt, you know, um, why should they be making the recommendations to me? It should be going back to the schools and their communities and they make those recommendations. So, um, it, they wanted to engage the principals and school site councils. And so you'll see on this slide, it was to empower each school to determine their necessary services for the next school year. Knowing that there needed to be budget reductions. And you'll see the rationale there, the principals and the school site councils better understand school communities, the school community's unique needs more so than the large budget committee. Uh, they would understand how to tailor their decisions that would allow them for more effective use of limited resources that that would be receiving at their school sites. And they would reflect the input that they would get from their parents, from their staff and their site councils. Um, and that's their main rationale, why they, the budget committee did not want to make recommendations to me to move forward with. And, um, both Elisa and Cecilia both sat on that, Janet, I'm sorry, not Elisa, I'm looking at, Janet sat on, uh, that committee and heard this from them also. It was something that I was very surprised about, I didn't expect to go in that direction, I, I really did. I think when it came up that night, I was kind of like, okay, tell me more, tell me more about it. Because I was, it's my expectation, it was going to come from them. After them receiving a lot of data that we gave them, we gave them so much data, it, it was kind of, one night we went over time limit and no one, um, really excused themselves to leave. They stayed the full time as we were going through this data. Next slide, please. So in the process that allocates funds based on total school enrollment, the school's grade configuration, the percentage of unduplicated students and state identified school support needs, the district allocated specific funds for each school to use in the 25, 26 school year. So we looked at enrollment as a criteria, we looked at grade configuration as a criteria. We looked at the percentage of unduplicated students at each school site as a criteria and state identified school support needs, those schools that are high priority schools in the district. Next slide. So one, here's one of the survey questions and it says, in the district-wide survey, the community agreed 79% to 21% that the district should prioritize schools with high number of unduplicated students. Each school principal met with their school site council to determine how the allocated funds would be used at their school site. Next slide. And here's a slide where each school, where you have the 24, 25 enrollment, the unduplicated students from 23, 24, your current district allocation, the 25, 26 allocation and the recommended, um, reduction. And the next slide will. And the next slide will have the remaining schools. You will see that our two comprehensive middle schools stayed without any reductions whatsoever. So this is going to be, uh, the next few slides are going to indicate the reductions that you just saw that will take place at each school site. And then there was a request to, you're taking, since they're taking away, what is going to be left and you'll see a slide, what, what they took away and what's going to be left at those school sites after each school. For example, here's Adalante. Here is what the site, site council recommend, recommended to meet the reduced uh, the need at their site. And so there, they are going to reduce district funding to reduce, they're going to use of district funding to reduce mental health counselor position point five. And the multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSSS teacher on special assignment, a point five. Counseling services at Adalante will continue with the support by, provided by partners. When they're talking about partners, you've got one life and you've got, there's another one coming in. There's another one coming in. Camina, it has not, we have not gotten the MOU or whatever yet, but it's coming through. From what I understand, Camina is going to be another partner that we'll be having. Camina walk. It's just in Spanish. So, and then the next slide please Wendy. You'll see current FTE and what they've eliminated. Current FTE for this school year and what they're eliminating for the next school year. And then you're just going to see what the district's going to fund. And the other, uh, the other position that the district is going to fund for them. They're keeping those. That's what Adalante decided. Let's go on to the next slide for the next school. Here we have Clifford School, which is uh sixty thousand dollars, it was sixty K. So the site council's recommendation is to meet this reduced district fund is to eliminate an unfilled English language development and literacy support position. The funds allocated for this work will be used to partially fund multi-tiered systems of support MTSS. The split will be a forty-five percent site funded and a fifty-five percent district funded for a total reduction of funds of sixty thousand dollars. And then the next slide will indicate to you what they had this current year. They are, and they are, you will see what they have the following year. Now remember, there are other things that they have, but we're just talking about district funding. We're not talking about Measure U, we're not talking about other items that they're going to be using at this point in time. Cause remember there's some schools that have Title One, some schools have a grant. Some schools have an uh, one school is waiting, knows they have the grant, but they just don't know how much yet. Let's go to the next slide. This is Garfield Community School. So remember, this is a school that also has a grant and also is CSI, right? Uh, the school site council's recommendation to meet the reduced district funding is to reduce one point O full-time MTSS teacher on special assignment to eight point five FTE position. The one point O FTE reading intervention teacher position to a point five. And the one point O FTE guest teacher. In twenty-five, twenty-six, the school have point five MTSS and a one point five reading intervention teacher. And here is the next slide. Shows what they had this current year and what they will have in twenty-five, twenty-six.
And just, just to clarify real fast on that guest teacher that was grant funded, that was always only ever grant funded for one year, right? That was always planned for just, just the one year, okay?
Right, it was, it was because there was CSI, they got it for one year.
We won't know, we won't know. We were actually on the second round. Um, so that we weren't on the first initial round when they first gave out the grants, we're in the second. So it depends on how many get denied, because you can deny and then it goes down to the next group. It depends where you fall in the state. So not sure if they're offending anything, they haven't told us. We haven't, we won't know the data where we are until January. Although today I heard it's coming out soon to know the status of each of the school sites.
I will just say real quick, and Rick, you've probably been hearing about this as well, but at CSBA, they were talking about that the revenue projections look pretty good for next school year, which is great because the stock market has been really going nuts. And you know, it's, it's our high wealth earners that support educate, well, they support our budget in California. So anyway, hopefully, you know, any of these sort of extra things, um, they'll still fund and may, maybe even fund more, you know, who knows? So anyway, okay, thank you.
So the next school is Henry Ford and the school plans to reduce a point three FTE curriculum and instruction teacher on special assignment. Um, as well as a one point O guest teacher. These reductions will help partially fund the multi-tiered systems of support MTSS, TOSA, newcomer instructional assistant and the reading intervention teacher. So let's look at what they had and what they're going to have. Twenty-four, twenty-five and then twenty-five, twenty-six. Okay, let's go on to the next school. The next school is Hoover Community School. It's a reduction of fifty thousand dollars. They're going to use their carryover funds because there are carryover funds that they have to um use, utilize them for their current positions for twenty-five, twenty-six. So let's look at what they had this year and what they'll have next year. The next school please. That's McKinley and McKinley, um, there was, there, there were no reductions because it's a middle school. The next slide is North Star Academy. Yeah, let's look at their current and their funding for next year.
One of the things that would have been, would have been helpful on this slide would have been like, what are the other, even other funding sources for some of these positions? So for example, on the previous slide, you said that they're going to continue, and this was also true for Adalanta Selby. Um, that they're going to continue with like partner support for mental health counselors.
So it's one life and it'll be Camino.
And yeah, right, those are the partners, but is it, how many hours? Like what's the, how much, how much, right?
Right, well, it, let me start and then, so we, we're meeting with the Sequoia Healthcare District to determine how many. Because the Sequoia Healthcare District gives us X amount of dollars and we utilize them at the school sites. And so depending on what the school site has now, it, they, they want to make a, a balance. For example, Hoover has quite a bit because it also has our CEF that's with them. So they probably would get very little from the Sequoia Healthcare District for, for mental health, very little. Whereas another school that does not have the same resources that Hoover has will get more. They try to give them between anywhere between twenty-five and forty hours a week. Most of the time it's thirty-five, I've seen thirty-five on the um MOUs that we get. But it's, it's, it's within that range that they try and give them. And then the schools have the opportunity to pick up more dollars, pick up, not more dollars, pick up more days and time, I should say hours with utilizing Measure U or any other dollars that are coming down the pike.
So some of it we just don't know yet, because I know I asked the same question, Mike, this week.
It's, we're doing this so early, we're doing it so early and I'm not going into the reasons why and into those weeds. Um, but we're doing this early. Normally we'd be doing this February.
Yeah, and I also.
We'd have a better gauge on what's coming.
Yeah, and totally. And I, and I also want to say that like, there's a stark, there is a big difference between the district-funded mental health counselors and the partner ones in terms of the program that could be offered. We saw the great presentation at CSBA. Um, so I wouldn't want to say that they're equated, but it would at least say like, here's what will be left for mental health counseling um at the school. So it's, it's just good to hear, thanks.
You will get that in the near future. You will get it. Uh, once we talk to the Sequoia Healthcare District, which is coming up, I think in January, yeah, I think they've already got the date for us. But they, their board has not passed their budget yet. And I know Pamela, she's not going to tell us anything until they pass that budget. Um, all right, let me, where am I? Uh, Orion. So they are going to reduce the one point O FD mental health counselor position and the point five FTE reading intervention teacher position. And they are going to, again, here you see Mike to provide, provide partners again. You know, um, maybe it would have been helpful. I guess we could have, what we could have done is just put what they got this year. Yeah, but, but that's not, you know, what they got this year from the Sequoia Healthcare District or what they got from any other grants that are out there. For example, as Roy Cloud's coming up, Melissa has a grant right now coming through for mental health. She's got the grant, but they haven't told her how much. She called them yesterday. She goes, I really need this for, like my super and down for the board meeting tomorrow night. She doesn't have it yet. Let's go to where it is now. Gosh, right. Here we are. Current and then uh twenty-five, twenty-six. And then we have Roosevelt. So they're reducing their one point O. Mental health counselor. And here you have what she said, what's being funded this year and what will be funded next year. Roy Cloud. Reduction of the MTSS position, point five in addition to a point twenty-nine FTE of the current one point O FTE mental health counselor. Or she's, like I say, that grant is coming, but she doesn't know the dollar amount. Services now, services for next school year. And then Taft Community School. He's reducing his one point O. He does have a mental health counselor from the county. When the community schools started way back when they gave, and at that time we had four, they gave each of them a community, a counselor, a mental health counselor. This is the, this is the only, there's one other school, there's one other, Kennedy. Kennedy and Taft are the only two schools that still have it. From the county, and he's never reduced it.
I remember when all that happened.
Wasn't during the recession, the Great Recession a little bit? A little bit after that. And so this is what he's funding now and what will be funded next year.
While we're here, I know we're going to come back and ask questions, but so there's a reduction of a hundred thousand, but then there's two positions which should be more than a hundred thousand. So did some of the money go elsewhere? This is Taft Community School. So if you, if you look at their reduction was supposed to be a hundred thousand, but they're reducing the mental health counselor at one point FTE and a par educator at one point FTE, that's way more than a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not sure why the whole amount isn't. Like, why would they need to have to do all of that?
It could be, is that part?
The mental health counselor is probably a hundred and eighty, ninety, two hundred thousand with all the benefits and everything. So somehow.
We can check into that because it may be, it may be if it's a special ed par. So it'd be coming out of special ed. Uh, we have to check that one. So I'll, I'll highlight that one. Thank you. We didn't catch that. And then um, this is recommendation number three, closed positions. And you'll see the closed positions here, what's recommended. It says each year in the spring, the district makes an estimation of the number of classrooms needed for the following school year based on pre-enrollment numbers. After the first ten days of school, this estimate becomes a firm number. As a result, positions that are not needed at the time are closed and the funds can be applied towards a reduction for the current school year and out years. So this is what we have at this point in time.
And that's in the current year?
These are positions closed for this current year, so it's. So that's going to bring us to the, it's one point three. And the next slide Wendy, please. Uh, this is adjustments due to enrollment. So although TK expansion has stabilized overall district-wide enrollment numbers during the last three school years, we continue to see families with students in all grade levels leaving the Bay Area and the state. While the community disagreed with reductions related to enrollment, fifty-six percent to forty-four percent, district demographers continue to study our area, which shows an ongoing decline each year with approximately one thousand students less by twenty thirty-three, thirty-four. So this is where we are looking at the um adjustment of staffing levels um with. adjustment of staffing levels um within some of our uh classified staff members. As you alluded to earlier, Alyssa, about what they were saying at A E C about the declining enrollment and and there was another art, there was today in one of C S B A's a big article about, was it four percent?
Four and a half percent K eight throughout the nation. And an actual increase of two percent in high school.
Of declining. Uh next slide Wendy. So this is streamlining of special education staffing. So what you see here are the elimination of uh some contracted positions. Um, one of our L V Ns, one of our parent educators and to eliminate um two contract counseling positions for special specialized services. So this recommendation aims to achieve the one point five million in savings by adjusting the allocation of resources within the Department of Special Ed. The proposal includes eliminating, as I just pointed out, ten contracted behavioral behavior therapists, replacing a contract licensed vocational nurse with a um current R C S D parent educator, reducing the hours of of um thirteen parent educators from six point five to six and eliminating two contract positions. These adjustments will streamline services and services and staffing while ensuring that necessary support for students with special needs continues with more efficient resource allocation. There was a study that was done last year and some of those recommendations from the study are some of these items that are in this slide right here. Once we have one which the next one. These are the additional considerations that were given to the Budget Committee. By the Budget Committee, given the fiscal challenges, the possibility of merging or closing schools was considered as a potential strategy to address underutilized facilities and improve resource efficiency. We explained to the committee members of the complexities of such decisions, emphasize emphasizing the importance of a comprehensive community engagement plan and a much longer timeline before moving forward with any of these proposals. For those and and right now it's Alyssa and Janet that sat on the board and Cecilia was out in the audience every time we were meeting. We started this process the spring before. Remember the Fair Oaks piece that we started back then, the spring before? And so there's just not enough time to go down that road. Because of the data that they were looking at, they were looking at each school, the number of classrooms and the number of students in each of those classrooms. And that's where um this uh thought came from in regard to that data. You know, so um I needed to, as for transparency, I needed to put it out here because it was something that was definitely brought to our attention. Next slide Wendy. The other items were um parcel tax as a community measure. The idea of pursuing a community driven parcel tax ballot measure also surfaced during discussions. This measure could provide essential funding to restore services and address budget shortfalls, especially considering that Measure U, which currently funds many other services at local, at the local school level, will expire in six years. While ambitious, this initiative was recognized as a potential pathway to maintaining critical programs and long term financial health. And now questions.
Um, so we we have a couple of speaker cards. Do you guys want to ask questions first or do you want to take the cards? Three last time I looked. Yeah, we have three. Um so just a reminder that um public comments are limited to three minutes. Um, just gonna go by order that they came. Okay, so um we'll take Mary Ann first.
Right one.
One on the right side.
One on the right.
It's the person on.
Am I on?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Good afternoon, R C S D Board members and community members. My name is Mary Ann. I'm a mental health counselor at North Star and Henry Ford. Here we are again. I stand before you less than ten months since the last set of cuts. I'm here before you tonight to advocate for the in-house district mental health counseling team again. Four and a half positions are up for cuts today. Four and a half F T E positions are up for cuts today. The sites affected are North Star, Orion, Adelante, Taft, and Roosevelt. This is truly saddening, particularly since the budget initiative survey showed that preserving mental health counseling was the top priority for the community and staff members. The district counseling team has had a major impact on our schools and the students we serve. I remember when I first started, there was a bit of stigma around mental health. Now, four years later, we have more caregiver referrals than any other referral sources at many sites. We also have more buy-in from teachers and staff than ever before. And more, and most importantly, we have buy-in from the students. Students come to us often asking to check in when they need help and when they need support. That's because the people in those positions have helped change the climate and culture at the schools. You know, when making decisions about cuts, H R often says it's about the position, not the person. That's simply not true. Uh the people are what make the position. The people matter. Dave Bookbinder once said, people are an organization's most valuable asset and the key to its success. Rem- remember that as you're cutting real people, not just positions, people who deeply love and care about the students and staff in our communities and schools. It takes time to build the relationship that the district counselors have established and you cannot replace that easily. Think about the one person that changed the course of your life. Maybe they said something or did something that resonated with you. If you didn't have that person, who knows where you would be today. For many of our students, our counselors are that safe space and have having a consistent person there year after year makes all the difference in the world. In summary, I thank you for your consideration and for keeping our students' mental health and well-being as a top priority. I know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make tonight, but I appreciate you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. Um and next we'll hear from Maria Stockton.
John, okay. Uh so I'm Maria Stockton, the representative for C S E A, California School Employees Association. I thank the board and the people that are still online to hear and listen. I really truly appreciated how you all sat there listening for over an hour to the facilities report. You hear it every time you meet and you're fully engaged in that. I seen that as you heard the board report or the report from the school as well. I just wish that you put that much energy, that much thought, that much consideration into talking to the people and the positions that you consider in cutting instead of just making cuts. I know you think about it, but I have not heard, and I've polled our people, I have not heard or seen any of the board members at their site except for an activity. It used to be, Alicia, you would come out at any time given, come and see the librarians, food service and everything. We haven't seen that lately. How do you know what these people do unless you go and talk to them? And I I under- I understand this committee who's made all these recommendations are full of parents and everything. Have they had the opportunity to really get dig into what they are suggesting? Years ago, the district as well as the librarians, the people who work in the library because they were, it was important enough to parents as well as staff to increase their hours now is being considered to be cut. And what was brought to us is not that they're going to reduce hours, which I understand, John, at the meeting you've been talking, reduce hours, reduce hours. In the meeting C S E A had, the thought is they're eliminating all those positions and the people can apply for them again. Now, how is it that you would feel before Christmas that you are called in and told your job is gone, but you can apply for it later? Merry Christmas. I think it was very cruel of the district. John is correct. These meetings could have been held in February because the notice has to go out in March. The reason when we asked why these meetings were held and these, this meeting is being held now is only for one reason, and that's because the meeting had to be done before the two board members left this year because they're more experienced. That's what we were told. Now, all these people that are being cut have a nice Christmas gift that their positions are being eliminated, not reduced. And it's because of the district. You want transparency? Most of these positions that are in here that you got tonight were not proposed or discussed with us in the meeting. We simply asked for the position of the parent educator at Taft, six and a half hours. They want to reduce her to six. Oh, eliminate her position and she can apply. Well, somebody else that wants to work at that school can apply that has more sorority. She's put how many years in that position? And now she's going to be taken out like that instead of simply saying, your position is being reduced. Do you want to take the reduction of hours? Instead, she's told she has no position.
Thank you, Maria. That you're, that's your three minutes.
Thank you.
Um and then finally, we're going to hear from Jessica Shade, who is on Zoom right now. Do you want to address it right now or do you want? Okay, go ahead. Jessica, hang on just a minute.
Thank you. I would just like to comment on that. Um, the decision to lay off is actually a very personal one. It does affect positions and it does affect people. The meeting for tonight by ed code has to specifically address positions. And then the conversations turn to the people affected. That is how this system works through ed code laws. And so we are applying those things. We met with all employees that were affected last week in meets and had discussions, including a separate meeting with C S E A where all of these positions were explained. And we went through them one by one on a spreadsheet on a Google Meet, including the regional C S E A representative. Um, we also explained the unique situation with librarians. Every library will have a librarian. Um, we did discuss that we were required to lay off fully and then add back. That is the way it works through our ed code system. So I can reach out to C S E A again for a second meeting uh to discuss that process again if need be. And certainly we are going to be negotiating with all employees with C S E A at the table to look at the open positions available for all um for all people that are affected.
Thank you. Um, okay, now Jessica, she got her hand up. There we go. Okay, go ahead, Jessica. You can unmute.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Um, hi, I'm a parent of two kids in the district. And I am commenting to let other parents, teachers, staff and community members know that there's a group of us who are coming together to try and launch a citizens initiative to put a parcel tax on the ballot to counteract these cuts. Um, we could easily raise the amount that's getting cut from the budget this year on an annual basis with a parcel tax and getting a citizens initiative on the ballot would be great because we'd only need a simple majority of votes to get it passed. But it would take a lot of work because we'd need to collect around seven thousand signatures to get it on the ballot. So we need as many volunteers as we can get. Um, if anyone who is listening to this meeting is interested in knowing more, you can check out the website we put together. It has links on how to stay updated and how to volunteer. That website is W W W dot strong schools, the number four, R W C dot org. So Strong Schools for Redwood City, R W C dot org. Um, so please help us fight these cuts by working with us on that. Um, and that website again, W W W, strong schools, the number four, R W C dot org. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Jessica. Just let me go back and look real quick. Okay. So let's hope for public comments. Um Does somebody want to start out? Questions or?
Um, but thanks. Um, I did want to ask just a couple of questions before I kind of get into like the discussion and the comments. Um, Rick, which budget lines are we going to see these reductions on? I mean, surely salaries and benefits. If we think of the aggregated ones in the big class, the salaries and benefits, but also services and operating expenses, right? And that'll be from our contracted services that are cut down from the services and operating ones. Okay. Because I've seen a question of like, why are you looking at just staffing positions and not, not the, not that whole budget line that's there? Um, but it is, right? Like, that's part of it.
Yeah, technically our, our one, two and three, which is our certificate, classified and then health and welfare benefits.
Yeah.
Will be impacted by this as well as uh our five thousands, which is our services uh and other operating expenses.
Yeah, cool. And then um
So um I I don't, because I don't think you said this in the, I mean, we've talked about it at other board meetings. I don't think you said it this particular presentation. So do you want to remind all of us what the goal is in terms of the uh cuts we need to make for next year in order to have a balanced budget? And and the reason that's important is we know we've already gotten letters from the county Office of Ed and you've had a lot of conversations with them that they would put us in a qualified or not qualified state. If we don't, I mean, if we don't make these cuts, right? Can you just speak to that a little bit? Because I know we've talked about it, but but not recently.
Yeah, um. So first, just so I say it and not forget it, we likely will not have a balanced budget. We'll still be deficit spending down here. Um, as most school districts do, that we work to eliminate that and that's some of the work that we're doing. Uh, but with these one-time funds, the expiration are fully expending. Um, we fully expended before expiration, so we're not giving any dollars back. Um, but with those monies running out, we identified um uh budget adoption in June that we need approximately um, I don't remember exactly, but six, six million and some change of fiscal stabilization measures at that time, they were unidentified. That we would have to enact uh during the course of this year in order to show fiscal solvency uh and try and maintain positive certification of our two interim reports. Uh after the close of the fiscal year, uh we were able to come back uh to the board with an unofficial M Y P at that time, given just a snapshot in time on that date that we were around five point seven million uh of needed reductions for twenty five, twenty six. Uh, and then I believe it was four point eight in twenty six, twenty seven. And as a reminder, any ongoing reductions in twenty five, twenty six would essentially carry forward to twenty six, twenty seven and not uh need those reductions. Uh, or additional reductions at that time. There's that time and as we're getting ready for first interim, um you know, everything changes a little bit, right? So uh I expect that we'll be able to uh fully contend with our fiscal stabilization measures based on uh what Dr. Baker presented tonight. Uh but that doesn't mean the work is done there. Um as Dr. Baker uh spoke to, we'll go through our normal process. Uh, you know, starting after the winter break, looking at projected enrollment, um looking at class sizes at school sites, uh and then bringing back anything else that we need uh in order to maintain our fiscal status, right? A positive fiscal status uh as we all strive for. Uh so we're still working out those numbers right now um for first interim where uh everyone will get um Friday night and be able to see exactly where we're at. Uh, another thing that we're trying to also do is minimize transfer in. Uh, another thing that we're trying to also do is minimize transfer in. Uh, from Fund 25 to leave those dollars uh in that fund and be used for other sources. So a combination of uh all of those parts are adding up to this, right? Um, just like with all these reductions, some of them are simply lack of funds. Uh, and they're not going to have a big impact. Uh, unless we kept them going, right? But we're not going to see a lot of. Uh, savings for some of them because we don't have any funds. So we don't have the associated revenue or expenditure with them. Uh, the ones that are truly general fund are going to have the biggest impact. Uh, through this process. And as Dr. Baker has said, is that we've all said at one point or another. These services came in, they were valuable. Uh, and we've had to pick and choose what we keep at this point uh in order to maintain fiscal stability. So. It's all going towards those those numbers. Um, uh, and we'll have final numbers uh by Friday of where we sit exactly. And then the continued work um through this winter, spring and going into budget. Development and adoption in June.
And then um. We are doing this early in the school year and I understand the reasons for that, but are are there? I mean, there's still opportunities for us, say, I mean, it sounds like there even grants that are kind of in the air that might still land and change kind of the impact of this.
Possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to talk about any specifics, but that's still there and being pursued and it might be able to change it. Okay. Um, and then on the, but back on the just relying on partner organizations for mental health, um, you know, how? From the presentation last week at um the educators conference, it was pretty clear that the district staffed ones were also like coordinating with the um. Partner ones at the site. So now at sites where they're just relying on partners like. Uh, who's who's making sure that the quality of, you know, is still good for.
It'll be on Apollo.
On Apollo. I'll take that one. Okay. Um, yeah, you know, I I do want to express my thanks for um for you, John, your staff, um, the budget renewal committee. Um, the site admins, the school site councils, the ELAX and the D LAC and, you know, and all the stakeholders really that contributed to this really challenging process. You know, it it's clear that these recommendations had a lot of, you know, really deep consideration, a lot of transparency, a lot of outreach at the sites, um, getting people involved. Um, I attended a couple of the school site council meetings and um, you know, could see that outreach and the participation of people who are in there. Um, you know, the reductions are going to have like, they're going to have a real impact. Um, and so we do have to make sure that whatever, you know, that this process that we followed and a lot of. A lot of what I'm watching is like, what was the process that was followed? And it 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 seems like a really good one. But we want to make sure that doesn't reduce what our vision of what, you know, schools should be, right? I mean, they they do so much more than educate, right? They address inequalities, um, they they nurture well being, they connect communities. Um, and so as we navigate, you know, this challenging time, um, we have to make sure that we hold on to that holistic view of what schools can be. And we're toward a future where, you know, all these supports aren't really extras, right? They're really just like necessities that are included in there. Um, because schools just aren't commodities, right? Or we can just sit there and manage them purely just for efficiency. Uh, even though that's what we're asked to do, right? With sometimes it's like, hey, go manage that school for efficiency. They're really, you know, these institutions meant to serve every student equitably. So as we make these decisions, you know, we have to not just think of school as like purely just an output of test scores. Um, but it's really the the role in fostering, um, you know, fostering opportunity in community. Uh, and I this pandemic era funding was was remarkable, right? It really gave us a glimpse of what schools could achieve if they, when, you know, when they have more resources. You know, we saw the value of investing, not just in education, but in the comprehensive student support. Like nutrition, counseling, um, extracurriculars, a lot more than I probably can't remember off the top of my head. And so as we sort of face this kind of fiscal cliff, I guess we should call it, um, you know, it's essential to remind ourselves of what's possible. Um, you know, when education is fully funded and to continue to advocate, as one of our speakers said, for sustainable. Solutions and, you know, more grants and other funding to preserve the gains. Um, the other thing that pandemic reminded us is just like how profound the impact schools have on society. Um, and how, you know, and so now really is the time to keep advocating for the resources for our students need. Um, but not just to sustain what we have, but to really thrive and grow. Um, you know, and then we heard our communities already starting to rally around the idea that education is really a shared responsibility. So that really excites me for for the future and where things could go. One other thing I wanted to point out, and I think you had mentioned this in your memo, was that. Like, you know, there's a lot of reallocation of administrative responsibilities that are happening with these changes here. Um, and so I just want to take a second to recognize the um significant burden that state and federal reporting has put on. Um, the requirements on school districts and, you know, coming out of the A E C conference, um, I'm reminded that California School Board Association has highlighted. Um, how these mandates, you know, while each one of them is individually necessary, they're actually really redundant, right? And they cumulatively detract from administrator's ability to focus on instructional needs. And so I think we as a board and anybody else in the community that wants to do it should really be sure to. Um, you know, to advocate for efforts to streamline and reduce the the redundant reporting. I mean, some are, we have to work transparently, right? Reporting is going to be a part of it, but it's really the redundant reporting. Um, and hopefully that by easing that burden, you know, we'll be able to free up some valuable time. Um, and, you know, and resources to direct those right towards benefits for our students um and opportunity. Um, yeah. So again, you know, thank you. Uh, it was a lot of time that I know your staff put into this, um, and I think it was important time. Um, I think it was really good to get the uh outreach, get the listening in there. Um, I don't know how sustainable the process is for the future. You know, we might have to tweak it, but I think it does sort of give a good. Way for doing broad changes at the district that um and getting pulling that input in. Um, and so I was really impressed. It really highlighted the power of community voice in shaping, helping shape the future of our district. Uh, and so I encourage everyone that was engaging in this uh to continue to keep engaging, whether it's, you know, through your school site council or district meetings or. Broader advocacy efforts uh that we have going on, um, you know, because really, really meaningful change is going to come from collective action. Uh, and if we work together, we can ensure that our schools remain, you know, not just places for learning, but we.
What we have to say.
It's just that I, you know, I I know I asked them all to be here tonight.
Okay.
And and so at at some of them have these special projects that are starting tomorrow.
I mean, it's up to them. I don't.
I, yeah, I don't have any questions for principals if they need to get going for tomorrow. That's fine.
I mean, the only one might be, but I don't know if you, I don't know if David was on here. I I am still curious about the hundred thousand for Taft. And it looks like he made more cuts than a hundred thousand.
We will look at that. We will look at that.
Okay.
We will look at that. So principals and assistant principals, teachers, other staff members, if. You would like to continue to listen on, feel free, but um I'm also saying, you know, call it a night if you want to.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate it and parents also.
Um, Alisa, did you want to go next?
Yeah, so I have a lot to say. Surprise, surprise. Um, first of all, Mike, thank you because I think you said a lot that I probably won't won't say um about that, but. Um, I guess first of all, I just want to say, you know, I do appreciate the district being um proactive in all of this. And it is really hard. Um, you know, I, when I started on the school board in late 2007, we immediately went into the Great Recession in 2008 and 2009. And some of the things I had to do right away was to make big budget cuts way bigger than this.
Yep.
And we were already much more streamlined. I mean, at that point in our school district, we really just had teachers in the classroom administrators. We didn't have all the extras. We didn't have, you know, as many reading resource specialists, mental health providers, all of that kind of stuff. So it does feel a little deja vu um to have my last substantive board meeting be very similar to my first ones. Um, and I just want to say in response to, um, you know, Mary Ann and Maria and and Jessica, but I think Mary Ann, Maria. Spoke more to the human element for sure. And I know that none of the people up here take any of this lightly. Um, this is really hard to do. In fact, I called both Dr. Baker and I talked to Wendy uh this just in the last, well, yesterday and today. Um, just saying, really? Um, and uh, the reality is if we don't make these sorts of cuts, I mean, that's why I wanted Rick to remind us where we're at with um. The budget is will be like some other school districts that you read about in the paper all the time that are really struggling. The state comes in and starts to manage their budgets. Um, one of the things I'm really proud about in the last 17 years is I've been here and, you know, prior to that and um with other school board members. Is that we have maintained our own independent financial stability. Um, we've always funded this debt, this um, the school district. On ongoing funds, but always one time funds. We're always looking for grants and individual donations and parcel taxes and all of that. So again, that was part of the conversation. I'm hoping that assuming that we do um move forward with the recommendation tonight. Um, one of the things that I talked to Dr. Baker about is I do know there's um actively seeking grants. And I'm hoping that some of these positions can come back as we find out more. I mean, this often happens, even if we make the decisions in February. Money is still coming in, whether it's school based donations or grant funding or whatever. And so oftentimes we are able to bring back some of the positions. I will say I am concerned about the mental health liaisons or counselors positions, the 4.5. And I think um, you know, Mike and I and Cecilia and actually David, our new board member. We um all were able to sit in on the amazing presentation that Dr. Baker and Michelle Griffiths and Anapala. Um, gave down at C S B A, talking about our program and really talking up the benefits. Um, so I understand, you know, why um individual schools made the decision they did because they've got other. Either other counselors or other providers on the school site. But I do think um that's an area where I do think if we can get grant money, I would love to see some of those positions come back. Even if we could bring back point five at some of the school sites, it kind of reminds me a little bit about where we've been with um. Community schools and other things, like if you can keep a little bit, at least you keep it alive at the school site. And then as monies come in, you see the value. Um, I I I'm happy to hear that at the school sites that um potentially could be losing a mental health. Counselor that's one of ours, that Anapala would be providing um oversight of the partners. Because one of the things we've heard about is many of them don't have a level of experience that our employees do. So they're interns, they're still working on their degrees. So. Um, I am concerned about that. Uh, in terms of the quality, but I do certainly appreciate our partners. I mean, I do think they do a good job. We they just could use a little coordination at the school sites. Um, I did want to speak uh to the librarians specifically, uh, because I did have some questions about that. Um, my understanding is that's really right sizing the um hours in the position at the school sites. And if you look back, um, many of those decisions were made 10 years ago in terms of the staffing at the school sites. And we've had a declining enrollment at some school sites and increase in enrollment at others. So some of the hours will go down and some will go up. Um, but my understanding is the process is we need to do the layoff um just across the board. But right in January, when everybody gets back from the break, there's going to be immediate uh negotiation. Uh, with C S E A uh to bring back those positions. So the district will decide, they're already having conversations. And I think most of the data they've got in terms of the number of hours per the librarian. It'll be based on a formula in terms of number of students, what's needed at the school site in consultation with the principal. So the district will decide how many hours and then the positions will be filled. But keep in mind, everybody who's currently a librarian will have the seniority to come back into the sites. And so I have not heard anything, I mean, Wendy's shaking her head that basically those people will be coming back. So I am really sorry on the timing, Maria. I totally get it, you know, right before Christmas or Hanukkah or whatever. Um, people take a break too. This is really not great timing, but I guess. I just, I mean, I've been told and I'm assuming that this is what's going to happen is that. You know, everybody's going to, they're going to have a spot, you know, back. It's just they're going to, it has to go through the the seniority process. Because there could be bumping or that sort of thing. Um, so anyway. Uh, so we will have librarians at every school site. In fact, I was just out out at the Taft Library today and it's beautiful. And um, Ms. Cooper was doing an awesome job with the kids reading and I love libraries. I know we all do. So. Anyway, um, that's covered. I also wanted just to speak to the administrators that are um being cut. Um, I know that our administrators are going to take on a lot more responsibilities. Um, the principals at school sites will be without a vice principal. I um, and certainly the district office, I mean, the work's not going away and so it's going to be redistributed. Exactly. I am hoping that um particularly at the school sites. Uh, you know, there's, and and I think there, I mean, there has been some conversations about supports for the principal. Whether it's, you know, a more experienced teacher or whatever that might be helping out. But, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about is we've used the vice principals as an opportunity for professional growth and then. Grow our own into principals. So we're going to lose that. So we need to think about for those teachers who want to be administrators. What are um additional professional growth opportunities? So they don't have to leave our district, go go be a V P and then come back anyway. It's a little bit of a minor thing, but I'm sure you've been thinking about that. So I just want to make sure administrators are supported. Um, there's all sorts of positions in there, but I I think at the end of the day, um, I'd rather have to not make, you know, the the vote on all of this. Um, but it does give me comfort that um we had a really good transparent process, got a lot of input. And then at the end of the day, for the individual site decisions, um, they went back to the site to make that decision. And so um, one of the things that we don't have here that was displayed was sort of like what you said is. Um, what all is at the school site? And so I do think at some point, um, it would be useful to bring that back, just so the community understands. Or at least at a at a school site, so it, whatever school site could talk about, here is everything that we have, because there is a lot more. That's not district funded. It might be site funded or R C F funded or whatever. But I I do think making decisions at a local level, I mean, it doesn't get any more local than making them at the at the school. Um, with that said, I just want to say that, you know, no matter what position or what person, everybody is valuable. And as Mike said, I mean, I think we finally felt like what it felt like to be more fully funded and we're sort of going um back in a direction. But hopefully if we can get the citizens initiative or a parcel tax or the grant funding, we can, we can bring back some of these positions. And I think I'll stop there.
So Alisa, just.
Yeah.
You're about, Michelle just sent me an email reminding me that uh Taft, remember last year at. Last year in February, whenever Taft was reduced to a point five, a point five. The reason why they had a one point O is because the grant that I got from the from the state gave the other point five to make it a one point O.
Yeah. But it's the point, that's why it's the hundred.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And I I think that just sort of proves the point that we're seeing just a snapshot. I mean, if we, you know, you'd have to spend days if we showed all the different.
Budgets. Oh, my God.
Positions and where the funding comes from. And the other thing I just want to say is I I do not think that our district should shy. I mean, ideally in in the great, beautiful world, every, you know, all these positions would be ongoing funding. But the reality is that has never been the case for our district. So we should not be afraid of one time funding, whether it's through a parcel tax or a grant or. A donation. And I I just think that we all need to keep seeking those out and being creative and finding where we can fund things. Um, that's just the way it is.
Thanks, Cecilia. Do you have anything?
So again, I was part of the um committee and as I mentioned to those that were present. Um, it's really hard times and it's very unfortunate. And to Maria's comment, um. Although it may seem to some people that we don't think of the people, of course, we do think of the individual. Um, I do want to remind people, I am a classified employee in another district and I totally get it. I've had conversations with Dr. Baker about how it affects each and everyone individually, and it's been explained. Um, and a lot of the times we may not ask questions because we've already asked questions and gotten answers for them. Um, I do want to say we don't take it lightly. Um, it is very unfortunate that other districts around us have given employees many, many. Um, races and they get paid very well. Um, that's just unfortunate for our district. Um, but what I do want to say, and I've always said it, and I'm so proud of Redwood City because all of you wear many, many hats. Um, regardless of, you know, not to put it like because of, you know, how much salary you guys make. because of, you know, how much salary you guys make. But it tells us a lot as a community that you guys care for Redwood City schools, students. And it's very hard to make these decisions. But again, we don't take, we don't do them lightly. We do really think about how it's going to affect each and every individual that is being affected. And again, if we don't do this cuts now, I mean, worse cuts would come down, I don't know, in the next two or three years. So it's not something that, we wish again, that we could just keep the money we have and more, right? Again, it's very unfortunate, but I do want to say again, hats off to all of you employees, whether you are a classified employee, an administrator, it doesn't matter what role you have, you guys are always here, committed, serving our students. So I do want to say, no, we don't take it lightly and it's really unfortunate that it is the timing. It, whether it was going to happen today or next year, cuts will be cuts and I don't mean it in a bad way. I really do want to say, thank you so much for all that you guys do. Although some people may not seem like we are genuine, I feel that we are very transparent. Again, we are putting it out there, the stakeholders were here, the people that participated in the committee were again, parents, staff, administrators. They all got the same information and the decisions were again, based on what the principals felt that was the right decision to make for their school site. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for your thoughtful presentation and for the committee and the staff and the principals and the school sites for guiding this process. There's nothing else, I guess we'll move on to the resolu. Is that what, this is an action item?
This is an action item, yes.
Okay. So we would need a motion to approve.
Thank you again for the transparent process and engaging all the stakeholders. I think that the, the process made a lot of sense and while it is a difficult outcome, of course, I'm going to approve this motion, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
I will second reluctantly, just I wish we had more money and we didn't have to do this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the resolutions. Are we talking through them or, okay. So 9.2, adoption of resolution number 11, reduction of certain classified services for fiscal year 2425.
Is there any questions, given the presentation regarding the resolution?
No, so all of these, just for the audience, these resolutions are all related to the action that we just took in 9.1.
And I would like to point out, I'm sorry, Lisa, that in reading the resolution, all of the ed code laws and delineation of steps that the board has to take is outlined in the resolution, then of course, the positions affected specifically listed.
Yeah, and then, so, I mean, I kind of already said this in my comments, but just as a reminder, because we've been through this before, but not everybody, you know, has been through this before or seen it, is that, you know, the process is we do this, but then as monies come in, we can bring back positions. And certainly specifically with the library media assist and the technical associate, that will start right away in January, because we're absolutely going to have positions at school sites, just not these particular, these particularly our positions, so. And then other ones like the mental health liaisons or other things, you know, sped or what have you, as monies come in or the need comes in, they could come back. Yeah. Because we are making the decisions really early.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 9.3, adoption of resolution number 12, reduction or elimination of certificated services for fiscal year 2425.
So similar to the classified resolution, it is the required document that outlines the process. Knowing that we do have more than the affected FTE that resign or retire each year, so we will be meeting with our CTA to negotiate the effects of the layoff.
Yeah, and so you're saying that typically there's more open positions than the following year than the number of employees that are being affected for certificated here? Yeah.
Yes, so the negotiate with, negotiations with our CTA would be to review the contract and review how the, the seniority and so forth works and the process and timelines, similar to last March.
Right. Given that this one follows 9.1, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 9.4, is that where we are now? Adoption of resolution number 13, release and reassignment of certificated administrators.
So this resolution affects the site and district administrators that were affected by the discussion earlier and through this resolution with the appropriate ed codes that correlate to these positions. Once again, if administrators had tenure in our district, they have the opportunity to certainly go be a teacher. Or once again, as other positions come up, we're still very early in the hiring season and looking ahead for next year with changes.
Yeah, so I just want to say, you know, similar to the other positions that we talked about, you know, our administrators do add a lot of value. And again, they're people, just like all these other positions that we've talked about. So I just want to say thank you very much to, you know, all of them and all of their work and recognizing them. And I think what's hard with, you know, each, all of these decisions is that each individual is very valuable and has made such a big contribution to the system the last year or many years. And once again, we're at a point where you're having to prioritize. And so anyway, I just want to say thank you to, to all of them. And I'll make a motion to approve this one reluctantly.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 9.5, adoption of resolution number 14, determination of order of employment for certificated employees for elimination of or reduction in particular kinds of service for fiscal year 2526.
So this resolution addresses certificated, the certificated teachers, if and when we would, in the very, very rare scenario in this particular case, get to a situation where there need to be tie-breaking criteria of one tenured or probationary teacher over another. But we don't expect that for this year. However, if we don't have this in place, then that would be a problem.
Yeah, so we haven't had to, I mean, we put this in place regularly, but when was the last time, do you remember that we've actually used it? It was a long time ago, wasn't it? Probably during the Great Recession, right?
2008.
Yes, I remember.
But.
Yeah, so not, not too much, yeah, yeah. And that's why, I mean, just so for the audience, I mean, the reason we approve seniority reports and why everybody checks those very closely is in 2008, we actually did have to do that. So anyway, like you said, we probably will not need this.
Right, certainly for this one with a natural attrition. However, it's important to have in place.
Right, in case.
In, in case.
There is.
A very slim chance.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So we, before we move on, we do have some items left on our agenda, but for everybody who's about to hop off and go to bed, I just want to thank you for sitting through this meeting and being engaged with all of us, so we appreciate it. 10.1, debrief on the CSBA Annual Education Conference. I did not attend, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna listen.
It was a great conference. I attended sessions about board policy. I did a board president workshop, it was informative. But the one that's probably going to stick with me the most was the mental health sessions, both the one that our district did, mental health and community schools, but also saw the screening of Anxious Nation, which I saw, Elisa afterwards, and we were both like, we need to debrief with each other for like five or 10 minutes to just decompress from it around mental health. So, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I just want to, I think the Anxious Nation, I don't know how many people have seen that, if that's something that's newer, but there is a, you know, it's available for schools. They also have some things for teens. It was very powerful and it just kind of reinforced. So yeah, I think that the themes that I went to a number of sessions about were the mental health, and I can send off some of this. And then of course, artificial intelligence was huge and Santa Ana School District evidently is doing quite a bit. So I was thinking that's one, in fact, I was gonna just send a note to Kathy James, but if you want to let her know. The, the main speaker was saying that they would be great just to sort of look at what they've done, because there's probably a lot of good template stuff. And of course, we always like to borrow best practices. So with artificial intelligence, they did talk about, you know, probably having some kind of a task force or a committee, basically hitting all the different areas of the organization, because it's basically going to just take over everything. It already is and those that are ahead of it are, you know, doing more. And, and their recommendation was just to, to bite off little bits. One of the statistics that I thought was interesting was, this is from the Institute for the Future, 85% of the jobs that will exist in 2030, so that's only five years away, 85% of the jobs, they haven't even been invented yet. So, you know, we, we, you need to go back to the critical thinking, the creativity, the, you know, knowing the basics that we're going to have to prepare the kids. There was some discussion about politics, you know, potential of the impacts of the new federal administration. CSBA is really trying to prepare and be ready to support school districts with policies and advocacy, whether it's legal action or what have you. We don't really know exactly, because there's a lot of talk, but we'll find out soon enough, starting in January, February. And I guess that's about it, given the late, lateness of the night. But just one thing, I, you know, there was just a lot of sessions on mental health and just wellbeing, and I know it's something that we're all struggling with. So, you know, that, that's what made, I think, tonight's meeting even that much harder. So I, I do advocate that if we can find grants and kind of keep some of this stuff going, we need to do that. And of course, just concentrate on tier one, the more that we can do tier ones, the better.
So we started actually the conference with Dr. Laurie Santos on the science of wellbeing. And so that actually said, I actually said, it made me happier, is basically talking about the positive psychology and how it leads to a happier life. So there's a lot of things that we could do as individuals. One of the things that resonated with me was like, sometimes when you don't even feel like doing anything, just picking up the call and calling a friend or a family member can just get you that connection with someone. You know, a lot of the times, maybe people may not see it, but you don't necessarily have to be in person in order to speak to somebody and be happy. And so, anyway, that's kind of how we started the, the conference and I thought that was, you know, a good note. I also attended some of the policy sessions and the superintendent's evaluation. I figure, being that I guess I will be the tenure board member here, if we ever have to do that, now that you would have to worry about an evaluation, because we believe that you are awesome. I know that when we had it, there's like comments from other board members that I just wanted to, you know, make sure that I was kind of doing my homework. A lot of the sessions, of course, were very interesting, it's just there were too many to, you know, there were a lot of them at the same time. And so it, it was great. I mean, it's, it's a lot of things that we learn and, you know, hopefully a lot of the things that we bring, some of the knowledge that we get, even if we were to apply it, it would help the, the school district. What else? I guess that's it. Overall, obviously, it was, it was a great conference.
You know, one other thing, I went to a couple of sessions, I know you did too, on educational workforce housing. And just, once again, there are so many districts up and down the state, either in planning, considering mode or planning mode. And then we did hear, in fact, in February, there's going to report coming out on the districts who are further along and the impact. So I think it just reinforced that we're, we're probably, we're head, we're head of many districts, just in terms of our planning and our applications with the city. But we need to do this because they're going to become, I mean, it's going to be a competitive environment and those districts that have education workforce housing are going to be more competitive than others. I'm confident.
You know, when they show that slot.
Yeah, yeah.
Different units.
Oh, we look really good, yeah.
Really good.
Yeah, yeah. And then I also just want to say that you, we were well represented. You did such a great job. We had a mental health and community schools presentation that Michelle Griffith and Anapala and Dr. Baker gave and all the school board members, we were there supporting, watching. Now, I don't know, Doctor, you went to some sessions.
The AI one, I was at, oh. The AI session, and then I also was at the, the one with all the legal memos, but that was a time when the earthquake shook. And I was just texting back and forth and doing emails back and forth to the district office, calling Wendy and doing that kind of business. So I kind of missed the whole thing that was going on, the presentation. I was so disappointed. Although I think, I think David was there, our new board, and David Weekly was there, so I can get the notes from you guys. Because I tried to download the attachments, the, the slide deck. I downloaded it, but I couldn't get it to get to a PDF so I could print it out. So I went to it. There was also one that the superintendents, we went to as, as far as with new board members, and it was presented by some of the superintendents. So I brought back some, some information for that, for our new board members that are coming on board, plus I'm going to share with our existing board members too, on what others our superintendents are doing.
And then before I forget, I did attend another, one of the sessions where actually they had, there were high school students, but then I thought, well, maybe we could think about maybe later in the future, involve some of our middle school students to actually present. They were very well spoken and actually talked about strategies on how to make their school, they were the Lake Tahoe Unified School District. So it was a girl and a boy giving the presentation. It was literally the students giving the presentation. So that was great, a lot of the people were there engaging and asking questions. And so that was great, because then, you know, they talked about the student voice. And so again, something to maybe look forward later on.
Great, thank you, everyone. Reports from board members and superintendent. So going all the way back, actually going all the way back, we had the reclassification ceremony.
That's right.
Since our last board meeting, and that's always a really nice ceremony, so I want to make sure to point that out. Do you have anything else?
A couple of things. So I did want to just mention at the, so we just talked about the Annual Education Conference at the CSBA Board Meetings and Delegate Assembly. They did talk about the drowning and documentation. So there's actually a report, and I have a couple of those that I can leave with you if you'd like to take a look at it. But the good news is, as part of the law, by March, the Department of Ed actually has to present all the different reports and analyze them and talk about why they're valuable. And so I think that we're going to, in the next year, as a result of this legislation that CSBA pushed through, working with all of us, I think we will see some help on this. So I'm, I'm really hopeful and I think CSBA as well. So I just wanted to mention that. And let's see, I, oh, Cecilia, Mike and I went to the Sequoia High School Dream Dinner and many of our students are represented there. It's always great to hear them talk and support them through scholarships is what the, the evening's about. I did have a chance to visit North Star and TAF this week. And I do get out to libraries and cafeterias and all of that and I try to thank everybody and recognize what they're up to. And it was just great. I mean, it's always great to get out there and see the teachers and the staff with the students. And then I also did go to Kennedy right before we all left to CSBA. And I was there for the budget meeting when you were there and the principal's coffee and then I took a little tour. And Kennedy, lots of good things happening there. And then I took a little tour and Kennedy, lots of good things happening there. And that's it.
The reclassification and the dreamers. The only other thing I have to add is Dr. Baker and Wendy and I attended the RCSD, RCTA Climate Committee. It was actually in person for, I think, the first time. It's, I've been on this committee since 2020 and it's been, it's, it's a really great committee. It's really great to get to hear what concerns the teachers have and what's going on in their, in their world. So, yeah.
Yep.
Anything from you?
Sorry, you mentioned.
Okay. Information on Seminole County Investment Fund, any questions? Correspondence?
Mostly just around the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually a lot of correspondence, but around the budget.
Possible other business suggested items for future agenda. Cecilia mentioned a presentation from students.
One thing that I guess I'll have to update our board policy on. Do you remember what the title was? Talked about, it is the reimbursement, basically. But it's not, that's not what it's called, I forget. It might just be
Right, it has to do with reimbursement. Remember a few years back, Janet and Lisa, we, we did a reimbursement for, when we're going to conferences and we upped the cost of what could spend on breakfast, lunch and dinner. We should probably look at that again and bring it up to the
It's ridiculous.
Right, 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 what it is now, yeah.
Wendy, you can put that for your future board policy committee. No changes to the board meeting calendar, just a reminder, our next meeting is on Tuesday, next week, not on Wednesday.
On Tuesday.
At seven o'clock for our board rotation.
And cake.
And swearing in, swearing in of the two new board members, you know, so. All right, it's 10:40.
I'm going to adjourn.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, folks. Good night from the East Coast.
You did it.